All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 1st, 2016. Be it six so three or so, I'm calling the meeting to order. First, I'd like to take and introduce Selectman Shannon Cutler to our far-right James LaBree. Closer to me is John Martin. I'm Charlie Kenecke. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting is being recorded by basically a handheld device, so it's going to be very choppy and so on and so forth. I'd like to break protocol now and bring the town administrator up to the podium.
Good girl.
Heather, I'm sorry the cameras aren't working and all the rest of that.
I broke them.
I can see you cut every wire for the town.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. But the whole... The Board of Selectmen really do appreciate the work you've done. We understand that you were new to this position and you were learning as you went. I myself watched you for the last two years moving forward. You've been able to stabilize the town budget. You've been able to take and bring people together and move forward. And I recognize this because of somebody that's been doing this kind of work. This is the tough position you're in. You don't make friends when you make decisions, but we all acknowledge the fact that you made some very good decisions and you've given us board excellent direction in many different areas. And because of that, we'd like you to... Where'd it go? Where'd it go?
It was pretty good, wasn't it?
I thought you were going to give me a tissue.
We'd like to give you this plaque so that you can remember us by and remember that this is your starting point in this career. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are close. It doesn't really count.
Thank you, Charlie. Oh, thank you, Charlie.
No, you don't want Charlie.
I'm waiting for the speech.
Oh, that comes later during my report.
You don't want to say anything now, okay?
I would like to wait for my report.
Okay.
My notes over there.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, that said, let's get back to work. I'm going to jump around here because we have different things scheduled around. So, basically, we have a request for a 61A to be released. Would Attorney Kemp please give us a little overview of what we're at here?
So, I am Amanda Jonas Kemp. I am here on behalf of Chet and Sue Kellogg, who are selling a lot F on Great Morley in Southampton, which is currently under 61A. I am complying with the statute. I have sent notice to both you, the assessors, the State Forester, the Conservation Commission, requesting a waiver of the right of first refusal. I sent you a copy of the purchase, $150,000.
Has there been any approach by Conservation or any other town agency requesting first option?
I went to the Conservation Commission meeting and they voted not to recommend the purchase of this property.
So, you're looking for a vote of this board to basically just...
To waive their right of first refusal.
Is there anyone else in the town that's had an interest in this property that you're aware of, Heather?
No, both the Planning Board and Conservation have sent emails saying that they were all set for the town to release it.
Yeah, we got those and they approved that.
Are all the rest of the lots still in?
All the rest of the lots currently are still in, but this is the first lot that we're converting the use of.
Yeah, they should do them all at once, but go ahead. One at a time works as well, but...
Do I hear a motion to waive our right?
I'll make the motion.
Second for conversation.
Okay.
So, what does this mean to the town, basically, once these all get converted?
So, when they're converted, you waive your right of first refusal, the Kelloggs are responsible for paying five years' worth of holdout taxes, which are calculated by the assessor, which is why we sent the assessor here.
Okay. And I guess my other concern is the road, because we've had issues with roads in the past, so we want to make sure this goes smoothly and everything gets done properly before it gets accepted, but that's down the road.
Well, that's outside the scope of this, so...
A little feedback there.
It's going to be a long night. You have a motion on the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Aye.
I'm a neighbor.
Motion carries.
No, but I know.
Yeah. Thank you.
In the past, I have taken the paperwork with me. I didn't know what your protocol is, because I don't know that we've done it recently.
Do you have the documents?
The assessor prepares them. Do you want me to pick them up tomorrow? Is that easier?
Whatever, whatever's easier.
Okay. All right. Then I'll wait until they're signed and...
You want it to be first.
I did want to be first, because it was five minutes. Because I knew this would be five minutes.
And this is not the first one I've seen in years in town. We're going to need a copy back.
Heather, do you want to take a copy before I take them with me?
Just three fingers is good, right?
Yep, yep, that's a majority.
Does that mean a corner?
We'll get there.
Hi, my name is Amory Darcy. I live at 77 Russellville Road. Couple nights ago, I was catching up on my select board meetings that are televised, and I saw that on Thursday, October 20th, this board voted to endorse no on question two. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I did look it up, and I saw that charter schools were on the agenda, but I didn't know until I watched this that there was going to be a vote. I'm a little dismayed that this board, who is supposed to represent all taxpayers, took a formal position on such a matter. This is especially troubling, since I did not see anyone speaking on behalf of charter schools. And some of the information provided to you was misguided, some was misleading, and some was outright inaccurate. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about me, and I appreciate you guys giving me your time and attention. I worked at an alternative school for at-risk youth in Holyoke for 13 years. My current full-time job is in the housing industry and has been for over 17 years. I am also the board chair for the Holyoke Community Charter School in Holyoke. I've served on this board in a voluntary position for over 10 years now. That's the reason I stand before you. Only hearing one side of the charter school question was a disservice to all involved. I'm here to clarify a few points where you may have been misguided. The first thing that should be made abundantly clear to you is that charter schools are public schools. I will refer to mainstream public schools as district schools, but make no mistake, charter schools are public schools. They are funded with my tax dollars, and they're funded with your tax dollars. And question two is an issue that affects the whole state and not just the town of Southampton. Charter schools were formed as an option for parents who had children in underperforming schools and lacked the means to move to a higher-performing district or to send their children to private schools. As was explained to you on October 20th, the intention behind these charter schools was to create laboratories of innovation and education, where best practices could be shared between charter and district schools. Parents must participate in a lottery in order to have their children gain entrance. This alone skewers the statistics, because studies have shown that children of involved parents fare better in school, which intuitively makes sense to all of us. So, by virtue of their parents participating in the lottery, those students are more than likely to do better in a school, which gives a statistical advantage in terms of comparing academic performance. Now, I'm just being honest, because that's true, and I understand the shortcomings with charter schools. You heard a week or so ago that charter schools can charge whatever tuition they want, right? That's not the case. There is a per-pupil tuition calculation in each school district, and the money follows the student. There is no cost to the parent. Does the money come from the school district's budget? Absolutely. But the district no longer has to educate, doesn't have the expense of educating the child. School districts will argue that they cannot operationally manage, but how is this different than when a district suffers a drop in enrollment due to a change in demographics? I would argue it's not. Meanwhile, charter schools have to make the same operational adjustments to accommodate their changes in enrollment as well. The district also receives transitional funds for up to six years. Furthermore, and I believe Jackie asked the question, are books and supplies part of the charter school budget? And yes, they are. Beyond that, and this is important, charter schools don't have the luxury of going to the town or city for a budget override or a debt exclusion, when they need to build or expand their physical facilities. Last week's speaker didn't want to discuss vocational schools, but the money follows the student there as well. There was also no mention of school choice and how much money flows into Southampton's coffers as a result of it. Or is that acceptable, because it's on the right side of the ledger for us? Okay? If you're really going to take a stand on this topic, it should include consideration of these facets as well. I agree that Southampton is an outstanding school district. In fact, there hasn't been an approved charter school in a non-urban setting since the Chinese immersion school opened in Amherst several years ago. Charter schools are approved in high-need areas or for a very particular mission. It's not the Southampton's, or the Long Meadows', or the Ludlow's', or the Wilberhans' that I'm asking you to think about tonight. I've worked in the city of Holyoke my whole life, and I just want people to step back and look at the big picture. For over 10 years, Holyoke has had the number-one teen pregnancy rate in the state of Massachusetts. The dropout and attrition rates in Holyoke were over 60%. Schools had been underperforming for a very long time, yet it took over seven years of horrible test scores for the state to step in. For those of you who don't know, the Holyoke schools are currently in receivership. Now, none of this, none of this is due to teachers, as you will never meet a more dedicated, committed, and passionate group as our Holyoke Public School teachers. But unfortunately, Holyoke has problems that are somewhat unique to Holyoke, as well as having other problems and issues that you would find at urban schools in districts like Springfield, Boston, Dorchester. The 32,000, and maybe it's 30,000, maybe it's 43, there's some debate about what the number on the waitlist is. But regardless, they're on waitlists in the Commonwealth, and they're primarily in those areas. You know, the system isn't perfect, and I certainly wish the funding mechanism were different. But I also don't have a problem with making schools accountable to the taxpayers, and that means running them a little bit more like a business, and I'm fine with that. And when you were told that many of the Commonwealth's charter schools aren't unionized, that's correct. I personally feel educators should be running schools, not unions. The Holyoke Community Charter School, and I can only speak to where I have personal and knowledgeable experience, 10 years' worth. We employ only certified teachers. Most of them currently highly qualified as per DESE standards, that's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or they're working towards it. And many of them are certified in more than one grade and more than one subject area. That's how you're able to react to changing enrollment figures and the fluctuation of tuition reimbursement, through a flexible, capable, and competent labor force. We support our teachers in achieving their professional development goals, including financially, and if they don't do so within a given timeline, they are not invited to return. That being said, many of our teachers have been with us since we first opened our doors 10 years ago. Our school, and I'm very proud of this, under my reign, just put the least expensive addition on our facility at approximately $197 per square foot, which was financed through our tuition reimbursement, not through a debt exclusion, not through an override. We have to follow the state-mandated designer-selection process that applies to schools and universities in the Commonwealth. So, this might explain why there are financial people and business people, as well as educators, on our board and on many charter school boards, which was something that was mentioned also. That's why. Also, it was stated that charter schools do not shoulder the share of English-language learners or special education students. I can only speak for our charter school, but I assure you, we don't turn any child away. If we do not have the capacity in-house to manage their individualized IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, then we contract out. Nor do we have a disproportionately high number of suspensions either, any of all in all of which are reported to DESE. I hear complaints that there is no collaboration between district schools and charter schools. We're experiencing great success, and our test scores, which is unfortunately, whether you like it or not, how it's measured, okay, they rival some of the top districts in the state. Okay? And this is with a predominantly poor population, of which 85% are Hispanic and many are English-language learners. We have offered our best practices with the district on many occasions. At our last workshop a few months ago that we hosted at the school, we had 10 people from the district sign up. Guess how many showed? Could be none. So, let's talk a brief minute about SABSS, because their name was mentioned also during that meeting. SABSS is a for-profit entity and is the educational management organization for several schools in Massachusetts, including the school that I serve at. We, the Board of the Holyoke Community Charter School, contract with SABSS to provide educational services. We hold the charter, not SABSS. There is a regulated cap as to how much SABSS can charge with regards to those educational services. If we're not satisfied with their performance, which I assure you has not been the case, we have the power to terminate this arrangement. And by the way, their headquarters is in Minneapolis. The last time I looked, that was in the U.S. Now, do they have a global presence? They absolutely do. They absolutely do, because they have schools all across the world. And I believe that's a good thing, because I want our students to be the best, not only in this country, but in the world. In fact, the Clooney Foundation, George and Amal Clooney have a foundation, they just tapped SABSS to work with the Refugee Children Program that they sponsor. The results we are seeing with our students' scholastic achievements are outstanding and reviewed annually in a joint meeting with both our board and SABSS. Our partnership with them is one of the reasons our school is so successful. By the way, let's just talk a little bit about accountability. In order to get appointed to this board, I was vetted through a nomination and election process. I had to certify a financial disclosure to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and had to submit my credentials, including my current work experience, my former academic experience, and my educational background, and I hold an MBA through the Eisenberg School of Management. I donate my time. Unlike many local urban school committees, I don't receive any form of compensation. Like other area school committees, we follow Massachusetts open-meeting laws. We post our meetings on the city's website at least 24 hours in advance, and we follow Massachusetts General Law 30B for procurement.
Five minutes.
Thank you. I'm just about done.
I know, and I gave Virginia all this time too, and I'm trying to be fair.
Right, and I think she got about 20, but I'm almost done.
You were right.
Two more paragraphs.
Close to 20.
Okay. The Holyoke Community Charter School has to reapply for the charter every five years. We have an annual independent public audit, and our students are MCAS or PARK tested, just like district schools. We are not allowed to opt out of that testing, as you were told. I dare say if district schools had the same level of accountability that charter schools have, they would not be allowed to underperform for decades without action being taken. And action is taken. In the state of Massachusetts, 16 schools have lost their charter, and not just for financial reasons. So, to say that there's no local control and no accountability is not only misleading, but it's insulting to me. Could we use more volunteers? Absolutely. But how many vacant positions do we have right in this town that we can't fill? So, in conclusion, why am I passionate about this subject? Because I see every day the toll that things like teen pregnancy and dropout rates play in our society, the burdens that taxpayers have to shoulder, the incarceration rates, especially in our minority and youth populations, the violence that plagues the streets. The answer for many of these societal ills is to value the importance of each child receiving a good, solid education, especially in urban areas. Charter school system has its flaws. No one knows it better than I do, and there's plenty of things I'm not satisfied with. But these schools are making a difference. Just ask our kids who beg me every month to expand to a high school, because we're a K through eight. So, I don't believe it was in the taxpayers' or the town's best interests to take the position to vote against it. Your constituents are smart people capable of making up their own minds. At the very least, in the interest of fairness, both sides should have been invited to participate in the discussion prior to a vote. So, I thank you for listening, and I actually would like to see the vote rescinded.
Well, first, let me apologize that this wasn't recorded or broadcast.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, too.
The townspeople can hear us, they just can't see us.
Okay, well, at least that's somewhere there.
I've heard I have a face for radio, so that might work.
So, there we are, stepping back a few years.
So, can I just ask you a quick question?
You can ask me anything.
So, I want to go back from my notes from that meeting and then from what you're saying now. So, Virginia had said that we're paying twice in our tax dollars. We pay for our schools, and then we're paying for the charter schools also. Is there truth to that?
The money follows the student, just like in school choice, just like in vocational schools.
So, we pay our taxes, it goes to Norris. If we choose to take our child and put it somewhere else, it's just going to follow them as if they were going to, say, Smitho.
Yes.
Now, is it the same amount? If it costs us 7,000?
We get the Holyoke District per pupil rate. We can't charge anymore.
Okay, so, there's no validity to charter school can charge as much as they want?
No, absolutely not.
They're not able to add on additional fees for anything?
No, absolutely not.
So, we're getting little differences here, so I guess after you're done, I'd like to hear...
Well, all I can tell you is that for 10 years, I've served the last seven as the chair. I signed the paperwork, I put my reputation on the line.
Okay.
Now, is that across all the charter schools? That it's a set dollar amount per pupil?
Every district has their own per-pupil tuition rate.
So, when you say every district, Holyoke has X amount of dollars?
We have one, Southampton has theirs.
So, when we move a child from here somewhere else, that dollar amount you're saying follows them?
Follows the child.
Regardless of what the school district has?
That's right.
Hmm.
Okay. And books and all that, they don't charge extra for, you're saying?
No, absolutely not. It's included in our operational budget.
And they take the MCAS?
As is the facility.
They take that MCAS and the PARK?
They take the MCAS, they take the PARK. We don't get to opt out of it. They monitor our scores. Everything I'm saying, if you go on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they have a tab for charter schools. You can check our test scores, you can do your homework yourself. And I'm just heartbroken, because I work very hard and very tirelessly, and these fallacies I hear a lot, and this is not my favorite thing to do, trust me, okay? To stand before you.
But obviously, you're very passionate about it, so it's great that you brought it forward. I think it's very interesting.
So, one more thing I want to ask, because also the information that we had received saying that our schools follow the frameworks and the charters do not.
That's not true.
They have to follow the same level of services, so...
Yes, we do. So, if, what, like I said...
It's chairman of the school, maybe we should have her speak.
Yeah, and I don't know if I should be... Yeah, well, they asked me, so I don't...
I dare you.
Right. So, like I said, if we can't manage a child or a student's IEP in-house, we contract out. Because, of course, if we needed a speech pathologist for one student, not going to hire somebody full-time, you know, have them come in and provide the services. And, you know, I'll go a step further. I invite anyone in this room to come visit my charter school, talk to my students, see it firsthand, talk to the teachers, talk to the special ed department people. I have no reason to lie to you.
So, a question, we're talking about IEPs and all that, but when a student applies for a charter school, what's the process for a student to get in? Do you look if the student has an IEP disability or anything?
No, not prior to accepting them.
Okay.
We don't turn any kid away.
So, it's blind, if you will?
It's a blind lottery. The only one that would take precedence is if they're our siblings, okay? We won't break up the family. So, if you have three kids and one of your kids get in, your two other kids get priority if they want to attend as well.
Board wasn't ready to schedule this to be a debate tonight, given the amount of stuff on their agenda, but I would entertain a motion if you want to withdraw the position.
I'll make that motion, so we can have further discussion at a later date.
I'll second it for...
Gather a little more information.
I'll second it for conversation.
Well, the voting is a week.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday, it's over.
If we wait until the next selectmen's meeting, then it's a moot point.
I mean, do we, would we like Virginia to come up there and...
If we can keep it short, only because there's...
Well, I don't really think that's fair, and I'm going to tell you why. Because Virginia spoke, and I can go back and look at the tapes. Nobody interrupted or rebuffed her. If she's going to come up and say some of the stuff that I found to be misinformation, that unless you want me to have another shot at it...
Well, I think you have a rebuttal, too, sure. We're not just going to make it sit through without saying so.
Well, Charlie's freaking out, because he's going to be here all night, and I appreciate that.
I think if we just spend a few minutes, because you're both here, to just clarify a few points, how about that?
And to be honest with you, I think it's important enough for us and the people out there.
I'm fine with that.
I don't mind staying.
Yeah, I agree.
I only have two things to say. I have no question that the speaker is talking about her school and that it's a good one. I don't think she's looked at all of them. And furthermore, the second thing I'd like to say is has to do with the funding. Yes, the money goes, and it isn't necessarily what the district would be charging. The first year that the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School was operating, and I was still teaching, it took so much money out of Hampshire Regional that we had to cut... teaching, it took so much money out of Hampshire Regional that we had to cut an art and a music teacher.
Is that because of so many students went?
The number of students went and the amount that they took out. The other thing is, yes, the first year, the school gets that money. The second year and thereafter, it's 25%.
Correct.
There's where the difference comes. And the other thing is that you can take one child out of a school, take one kid out of Hampshire, out of Norris. Does the electricity go down? Do your utility bills go down? Do your busing costs go down? Do even teachers' costs go down? That's all I'm going to ask you.
I guess it answers that question. I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. That's why they give you one full year of 100% for the student and 25% after that, so it's a roll into, and they hope you to, want you to right-size down the road, which, as a business point of view, that's what you need to do as a business.
And that's it. I mean, you know, and I thank you, Virginia, and I understand other people's passions. I don't have a problem if we ran schools a little bit more like a business. Why do they get to think that they don't have to react operationally? Charter schools are. If I pick up X amount of kids in a year at differing grade levels, I have to react operationally to serve them. And really, we're talking about not the Southhamptons, and yeah, they probably did take a hit at Hampshire Regional from the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School. So let's punish the 30,000 kids on wait lists in Boston, Dorchester, Springfield, Holyoke, the kids that are succeeding and doing well. It's a personal choice, and I get that people need to vote how they need to vote, but my point is, I don't think that it's up to you guys to make a recommendation. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a pretty smart person. I can make my decision, and I think a lot of your constituents can, and I don't think that I'm probably alone in feeling how I do.
Do you think us voting as a board is going to influence any of the folks out there voting?
Yes, I do. And I understand school committees doing it because their vested interest is in the schools. It makes sense. But as elected officials, your interest is in all taxpayers. Let me ask you this: Are you taking a position on any of the other three questions? The little animals, you know, in the cages, and, you know, the legalization of recreational marijuana, the casino? Are we taking a position on any of those and recommending how the voters vote?
No, but we had a committee that is in the town that approached us, asking us to support their position. That's the reason that triggered this action.
Yeah, but you supported this one, so, you know, I just, I think that, and, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's a moot point, because when Virginia spoke, the cameras were rolling, the people at home were watching. I don't have that advantage, okay? And they saw your vote.
Well, I think, though, to be honest, if I was just listening to your voice, not having a picture in front of me, that's probably more intense, because again, your passion comes through, so I'm not, I don't have to look at a picture to see it, you know, you hear it coming through, so...
Like I said, you're probably better off if you're on...
I can't say that.
Appreciate that.
I just have one more thing.
30 seconds.
Many, almost every school committee in this state has voted, even in places where they have charter schools, and many city councils, including Northampton's. I'm hoping perhaps, if you think that your vote is going to influence a lot of people, think about the mayor of Northampton who has taken a stand against it. How many people can he influence? Mayors, city councils, and other select boards have taken the same stand.
I can understand school committees. I didn't hear about the mayor, so I can't comment on that.
But I think, I think any of those groups can devil's advocate, any of those groups are looking at how much money will be taken from their budget. So, I mean, that's why I voted that, because I don't want to see the school lose money. I'm not disagreeing with, people should be able to go where they want and the money will move, but from, that's my personal thought, and that's why I voted.
There's a motion on the table.
Can we reread the motion?
Haley, can you read the motion back?
To withdraw position.
There was a little more to it, but, you know, I guess that's the shorthand version.
The motion was to withdraw our position on the previous vote.
And stay neutral?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't think we had, we didn't have all the information, or at least more than one version of it, before we made our decision. At least, that's my position on it, because hearing more information on it, I think that we jumped the gun on that. But that's just me.
Yeah, I think that they both had their opportunity to explain to the town. They airtime, unfortunately, you get the video, but the audio supposedly went out. So I would say that the townspeople make their own decision, and I think maybe we should be a little more neutral on this one.
If we're ready for a vote. Hey, how many people are in favor?
All right.
Genonymous.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks for the information.
The vote is to withdraw the position of the board of selectmen.
And to remain neutral.
And to remain neutral. This is Haley's first night doing the minutes.
Do you want us to talk slower?
Yes. Annunciate clearly.
Yes, please.
It's still open time for public. Next batter?
Yeah, all right, I'm going to hand out some photos. Yeah. My name's Cherry Holga, and I live on Cook Road. We actually would like to request some speed bumps on our road.
Speed bumps?
No, speed bumps, just speed bumps.
I understand. I've just never had anyone ever come to me that...
Well, I have an article here that I saved from a while ago.
Who does it?
To get the price, first of all, because Northampton was talking about putting them in. Of course, they have some up there already. And the speed for each, I mean, excuse me, the cost for each is about $3,000.
And why do you need them?
Well, just a minute, I will continue. So are you familiar with Cook Road? Okay, so it starts in Holyoke off of Southampton Road, which is, that's actually Rock Valley. Then you have the town line, Southampton, and then you have two curves in the road which are causing a lot of the accidents we've had recently, and then you have East Hampton and Cook Road. And I think we may have had some, we have a couple neighbors here, but we had given them the time of seven. I'm sorry, we made a mistake. Anyway, so I'm talking about the problems that we've had. Now, I just want to say, I'll talk first about the speeders that we've had. The speed limit on Cook Road is 30 miles per hour, and we get a lot of speeding. We've had a lot, the worst thing that we had, which prompted me to first think about this, was a few years ago, when we had two guys, or maybe three, I think one left the scene of the accident, but they were able to apprehend two speeders who were drag racing down the road, taking the two lanes, which are two-way, but they were going this way, and they came within six inches of the gas line, the main gas line. They broke the fence, the fence came down, and they were just that close to the gas line. So that's what prompted me to start thinking about it. That was a few years ago. They also almost came head-on to two very young children, neighbor children, who were coming the right way in their lane. Anyway, since then, those pictures that you have, I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at them, you have, yeah, those are just within the last few months. That's from people screeching on their brakes, because, like I said, there's the curve, two really curves in the road, Southampton Park, and people just are going really fast, and they're screeching on, and that's the visual. Now, of course, with winter coming up, I'm concerned, because we always have people going into yards and mailboxes in the winter on Cook Road every year, but this year, I'm really scared because there's more people speeding. Also more concerned, because as you've probably all noticed, there's more people jogging, biking, and walking. It's finally taken over, and although, you know, a lot of people have always been walking there, it's now, I'd say it's about triple the amount, and that's another concern I have. And I've been observing the speed bumps, and also, well, anyway, I've been observing the speed bumps around the area. For example, on County Road, which is another cut-through that a lot of people use instead of Cook Road, there's a big speed bump right at the end there, at that intersection of East Mountain Road and Cook Road and Route 202, and I'm sure that's saved a lot of lives. It's a very big bump, and everybody stops, and I always say to Andy, who grew up on East Mountain Road, thank God for that big bump there. Now they got the Dunk...
Familiar with that?
Well, try it, try it. Just go down County Road and try it. You'll see the huge speed bump going into Cook, uh, East Mountain Road. It's been there forever, where they're putting the new big Dunkin' Donuts.
There's a speed bump.
And where's there?
There's a huge speed bump.
Where is it? I know where the new Dunkin' Donuts is, but where's the speed bump?
It's right there.
It's not a speed bump, per se, it's a...
You're talking about Route 10 and 202?
Yeah, it's raised. It's not a speed bump, but it's raised. Isn't that a speed bump? What's a speed bump if it's not a... Well, there's two different types of speed bumps. Also, well, look at the ones on Florence Road. How many familiar with Florence Road? They've got two speed bumps, and they mark them speed bumps.
Right.
And so, that's all. And again, just let me, and I don't want to take more time, because this is the first meeting, and I'm trying to get a few more neighbors. We have one neighbor here, I believe, and again, it was my mistake.
I don't disagree with you, because we're seeing plenty of traffic issues throughout the town.
I knew this was going to come up, the whole town. Why don't you have speed bumps in the whole town?
No.
Oh, okay.
Personally, I'd rather just dig slit trenches across the road and just...
Oh, my God, I was thinking the same thing.
Rather what? What would you rather do?
This way, in the ground.
Yeah, we could dig a hole.
So it's a reverse.
But seriously, what I, and I'm only speaking as one, but what I would like to see is you draft a letter, it's your neighbors, have it co-sign, send it to this board, then what we'll do is we'll ask the police department, and we'll ask the highway department how they feel about this, to see if this is something, they're going to probably have to have a traffic engineer do an evaluation to determine.
Oh, sheesh, and there goes money for an evaluation.
But if you want to trigger this to go...
No, that's what, I just wanted to know the procedure, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here. So we send a letter to you, and then we go to the police, and you go, you're going to go.
Just send it here.
Then what will happen is we'll go to the police department, we'll go to the highway department, we'll ask them how they feel about this, you know. One of the issues with speed bumps is plowing snow.
I know.
You know?
I know that.
The other issue is, you've got to be careful of drainage issues, because the road's basically designed to shed water, and you're putting it the wrong way. You have ice build up and stuff. There's a lot more to this than just...
Well, we'll find out. We'll just, you guys will go.
I'm not saying no, what I'm saying is...
They seem to manage in Northampton. They've got them on Florence Road, two of them, and they're very effective, because I go that way all the time, and they, the speed there is so much slower, and that speed bump, maybe it's not an official speed bump, but...
There's been four major accidents by my...
No, no, okay, we'll do it. We'll draft the letter, we'll draft the letter.
People could have got killed.
No, it's okay, they understand that. We'll draft the letter.
Nobody's saying no to you.
No, I know, I'm fine. We'll draft the letter, we'll bring it, when is the next board of selectmen meeting?
The 15th.
Okay.
But you can mail it anytime.
Or email, yeah.
You don't have to come in for this.
Yeah, well, my mother's in the hospital right now, my, you know, I've got a lot of, I can't spend a whole, so as soon as I get here, it may be the next meeting.
So just draft a letter, have the neighbors sign it, send it in, we'll get it rolling.
As many neighbors as you can, it'd be better.
Yeah, I know, like I said, I think there's people coming, so we do have one neighbor here that's raising her hand.
So if you draft the letter, I'll go and get all the neighbors to sign it.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up.
Well, this is the first.
But, you know, if it's an issue, let's look into it.
Well, it's the first in Southampton, not in us around the town.
I know, I'm just...
Like you said...
All the neighbors are complaining.
Yeah, there's...
Hours and hours.
Oh, I know. I live on Valley Road, and if you look at the section of Valley Road I live on, it's Brickyard Road and Route 10.
You're over by Route 10 there, yeah.
They come down that hill, and they love to fly over the...
Yes, we do.
But you're right.
Like Potter. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anyone else for open time in the public? Oh, you've been sitting so quiet.
Oh, my God, this is going to be an all-nighter.
So I'm Erin Cooter, I'm the chair of the Norris School Committee, and I'm here, real quickly, to bring up a couple things, because I've kind of heard rumblings that there's been some priorities set for next year, and I think it's important that you hear that there needs, that the school needs to be on this priority list also, as one of the departments. So we have been, there's been rumblings about mandating of MCAS testing and having to be computerized. It's been going on for a while. The state has come through and said that by spring of 2019, the school has to be fully functional on MCAS testing for every single grade that's testing. Currently, we are going to have our fourth graders test this year. They've never tested on computers before, and we have to borrow them from Hampshire Regional. We have basically 60 computers in the school, and that's it. And in order for us to be fully functional and to also incorporate this in our curriculum, because you can't just give it to kids and ask them to take tests, we really have to have about 160 computers, which is about a, which is each class has to have a cart that they can, that can be rotated between each, so a grade, each grade needs to have a cart. So I want to bring up that we have done some, we've put together our technology budget planning that, that we're circulating now and working with the IT technology person up at Hampshire Regional, what that looks like, but this is a very real problem that we have to address and try to figure out how we're going to find the funding for it. And there, to our knowledge, we're doing as much research, but the state's not giving any money for this. So that's one thing that I think is on our, in front of us right now. Another thing that we want to, that we've made clear last year, and I think we were also talking in terms of this year, is that the school has been sustained by excess school choice spending from the school choice account. So in essence, we take in about $350,000 to $400,000 in school choice money, and we've been spending about $600,000 to share up the budget, so that we haven't had to make any additional cuts from the two teachers that were let go two years ago. This money, if we spend at this rate, will run out by next year. So we have to try to figure out, she's not here, but the woman that basically said that we don't have to, that we aren't fiscally running our department or our schools like a business, I'm not really sure where else we can cut. We've been as fiscally responsible as we can. So we, as the school, are coming in front of you guys to say, we want to be on that priority, because we're looking at some pretty big deficits if we can't figure out how to work with the town and try to get some more money, or, you know, I mean, we're at, we're, everything's cut. I mean, we don't have textbooks, we don't have, I mean, there's, we pretty much have nowhere else we can cut. And I think that we've talked about in the past that we are the third from the lowest per pupil spending in the entire state, which I find appalling to be at such a great area and have that be our claim to fame. So I'm coming in front of you just to kind of put this out there, that the school, we're doing, we are talking about a lot of things for the next year, so basically fiscal '17, whether we try to look to see how we can try to get some more money from the town, whether it be some sort of override, a debt exclusion, we're trying to think of different ways to be creative, but we have some big holes that we need to plug, and that we need your support, and so I'm kind of coming in front of you to tell you that, and we will be back periodically to kind of give you some updates, but I hope you consider when, in your priorities, that the school is one of the priorities for next year's budget.
Couple of questions?
Yeah.
School choice coming in, 300, 400,000? How much going out?
Oh, I don't know.
She said 600.
No, well, that's what we're spending from the budget.
Yeah, that was just from their rainy day fund, if you will.
115, 115 for the share.
So we're getting two or three times as much coming in, which is a good sign.
And we have, because we've been, but the problem is, is, and that's true, but we're, if we continue to, the reason why people come to Southampton is our class sizes, is Is because we can give that. And when we already had to, to, two of our grades only have three, three, um, teachers, they're just twenty-four kids in a class. So that's the reason why we've been attracting. If we are, start to lose some of this integrity, we're going to start losing some, some.
And on the computers, you need about a hundred? These are laptops we're talking about?
Yes. Um, there's a, there's a, just buy the computers. This is, this is a whole, we, we have to teach the kids how to use the computers. We have to put it into the curriculum. There's all other, there's more expensive than just buy the hard. We don't have enough bandwidth. Like, there's a lot of things that go into this. I mean, we have to be able to, the kids have to upload and download.
Starting point is, I think, what Charlie's giving. I mean, you gotta break it down.
You can't walk in here and say, this. You have to give us what you want because there's different approaches for different issues.
Well, I agree. And it, and based on, on what we have in year one, we need seventy-three thousand dollars. It's computers and then it's the, you have to have, you, most of it's computers. It's almost all computers. And then you have to have the printers that go with the computers because there's a part that's a printing off of it.
But I don't think we want to build the hardware into the operating budget. We want to do a capital budget on that. And if there's staffing or whatever, you can build that into the operating because otherwise it's gonna continue forever.
If you break it down, then we can break it down.
Yeah, so, so, so it was a twofold tonight in that I wasn't necessarily saying that we were gonna come for, for operational money to, uh, what I was, two things I was saying is that, is that this is a need that's coming down in the town, so you being the town, the whole town. And that, um, Norris, um, has a lot of other needs too that are operational too. So there's kind of a twofold thing going on.
I'm a little surprised because I talked to the school committee representative a year ago and suggested that they put a two and a half override or debt exclusion for this at this presidential election because that would've brought the lion's share.
And enough really thoughtful process. We're thinking of things to work so that the school isn't oh...
Anyone else for open time?
Great.
Yeah. Well, I want to jump back to the executive sessions, which is where we were supposed to start at the beginning. Uh, we have, we have individuals here that we were supposed, so I'd like to get into a roll call vote under Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Item two and three. Interim Town Administrator Contract Discussion.
Culler, aye.
Kneckie, aye.
I had a question. Where can I put the question?
After you say Martin, aye.
No, that makes it official. If we got a couple of people here that had short things that we can get out of the way, I'd, you know, I'd be okay with doing that rather than making them wait. Nobody?
There's nothing short, nothing short.
Every one of them's got a presentation, as far as I know.
Martin, aye.
Aubrey, aye.
The meeting is closed.
I have a question. Just, so are you moving to executive session now?
Yes.
I'm coming back.
So how come it's, how come it's listed in the meeting, executive session is at the end? Did you vote to move it forward?
The executive session is listed as first if you were to look at the...
Well, number two.
Number two, I mean.
Number two.
I'm looking at the agenda right now posted. It says open time for public, Item two, appointments scheduled.
Yeah, and...
We just finished open time for the public.
Yeah.
So then we go to number two, appointments scheduled. This is what's posted on my town government. I'm only asking because...
That's not what my printout says.
It says to conduct tragedy session, negotiation for non-union.
Yeah, that's item nine on the posted agenda.
Really?
Yeah.
It is number one, was it?
I've got a number, I've got a number two.
Both of my copies.
I'm looking at what's legally posted for the meeting, not the printed copy. And the only reason I ask is I'm sure people are here for the first...
Oh, it's a good point, Mike.
The items in number two versus the executive session, which everyone will leave and then eventually just leave and not come back for items two.
No. If that's what's officially posted, I mean, this is what I got emailed, so I think we know.
Yeah, it's the same thing I got, right?
I go right on my calendar, that's where it is.
That's what I have right there.
I know, we've announced it, whatever you want.
Heather, Michael's pointing out the fact that the legally posted items do not require, have executive session at the beginning of our meeting.
They, they do have executive session at the beginning of the meeting. If you look them up online.
He says he's looking online.
He's online right now.
You're on my town government?
I'm looking at my calendar.
You're looking at, so look at my town government. And the first items, but either way, the board can move items around. Theoretically, they're supposed to vote to move them around. But since that has not been the tradition or the path of the board, um, we've generally moved things in the past.
So the agenda's changed since it was originally sent out. So it was modified recently.
Yes. All alerts always go out, as you remember, the requirements of the open meeting laws, that an agenda be posted to what is reasonably expected and anticipated to be discussed by the chair. Any modifications that come up, which are regular, get updated onto my town government. And I believe the last update was either yesterday or the day before. Updates do not require the forty-eight rule. As soon as you know that there's gonna be an update, you add it so that it can be reasonably, um, notice given. But yes, these are intact, the first things on my town government.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at now, Mike, and she's right.
Yeah. I mean, what posts to the calendar, at least on mine, is the old version that was posted a week ago. It's just, it's disheartening to know that we, people come to the meeting to attend a certain portion based on the original agenda, then the agenda changes.
So yesterday at eight AM was when it was last updated. And it did it.
Yeah, so updates never...
Updated several times before that.
So they never update to your calendar, right? So if you save your town, you're inviting here, at least not in mine, so.
I know.
I mean, if that's, if that's what you choose to do, that's fine. I just, I know that you'll probably lose participation in the items that people may have come to talk about versus the executive session, which could last an hour or so, you know, and it just drags the meeting on more.
Well, the executive session, in my mind, was supposed to start at six o'clock. Because the parties that were supposed to be involved were late because of traffic. I took it upon to move the schedule around to take care of people with short items and to do open time for the public. If I took and followed the agenda to the letter, then we wouldn't have the executive session at all, Mike.
Well, I'm fine with that because I can't sit in on it, as would probably some of the people here. But that's fine. It's your, obviously, it's your decision. You voted to, to move forward.
I will tell you this, I don't expect this to take long.
Well, is there something that he need, I mean, is, is, is King Tom here for a reason? Is it something?
There's other people that need to, again, if they're short things, I'm fine.
You know what, though? We just had open times. We announced it again. He's been in and out of the room since we had open time. You had something to say, you say. He did not, we're done.
I don't, I don't know why, why he was here.
Bob, you're gonna need excuses for a few minutes.
Just get out.
So are we going into executive?
We are going into executive session. November first, uh, about seven forty-five. I would like to, uh, finish with, uh, Mr. Markell and the contract. Would you like to do that? Now that we're there, he can go home if he wants.
Absolutely.
Uh, we've discussed in negotiations the hiring of Robert Markell to be the interim town administrator. We've come to an agreement on moving forward with that, uh, or an understanding. I'd like to have the board vote to hire him. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Under the terms and conditions we discussed.
Under the terms and conditions that were discussed in the contract.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, sir. We're now the interim.
Thank you all. Uh, I'll be here at ten AM on Thursday.
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 Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck, Brian.
Heather, do you have any preferences? Who goes first?
Um, I think the longest one's probably going to be, uh, Mr. Lynch, if you want to see if people who are here for department reports want to shoot through quickly.
Okay. Are we talking to land groups?
Yes. Do you want me to go get, um, the buildings? I can, I can send them a text.
All right. Uh, Water Department?
Not present.
All right, a couple of updates on the Water Department. I've been talking to Kurt Bojolay. Uh, he's on the commission. And they are negotiating with the city of East Hampton to, uh, sign a agreement so that they can purchase water from the city. At this point in time, it's in the, uh, the Water Department of East Hampton's discussion, so just be aware. Also, the safe route to schools. Uh, as you know, we've been working forward to building sidewalks and all that with a state, uh, operation. One of the things that came up was a water line between Palmary Meadow Road and Cumby's, that area. The grant did not calculate in the amount of money it would cost to upgrade that water line. That water line is a chronic problem with the Water Department. They've informed me that they would like to put this on the next town meeting floor and allocate money out of their enterprise account to pay for that. So we're looking, my guess is at this point, January, but be aware of that.
Does the enterprise fund have enough?
I didn't ask. They said that, uh, they were gonna fund it out of there, so I figured, you know, these are telephone conversations.
Want an answer?
Yes, I would love to know.
Um, Tom, Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmary Meadow Road. So Tom Gunn and I, and I talked to Matt Christie also about this particular item. And once they get their free cash certified, they probably have in the range of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in the retained earnings that they can actually, um, with, you know, take from, to appropriate for this particular project.
And how much is the cost?
I think they're trying to get them down to about a hundred thousand dollars. So they're negotiating with the state at this point, the last conversation I had with them, so. But there is enough, there's, like I said, about, gonna be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that they can, they can use to, um, to fund some sort of project, so.
And according, according to Mr. Bojolay, this is more cost-effective working with the state doing this than us trying to do this on our own anyways.
So we're gonna pay them to do it, that section? Are we gonna do it while they have it open?
My guess is going to be a private contractor's gonna do it, but I haven't read the contract. Because typically, they do all encompassing contracts. I could be wrong, but that's the way I'm understanding it. So that's the update on the Water Department, as far as I know. Uh, Conservation Commission.
I'll try to keep this short. Um, Marla Hank, Conservation Commission, Gilbert Road. Um, we're working on a number of projects besides our regular, everyday permitting. The Cook County Road acquisition of property for water protection that we passed in the, um, May town meeting here was approved of by East Hampton CPA on October twentieth, which was a milestone. We were really happy about it. It now goes to the East Hampton City Council for a preliminary vote tomorrow. We're, then it will go to their finance committee and on November sixteenth will be the final city council vote in East Hampton. Uh, we're waiting to hear if we're getting the four hundred thousand dollar land grant. We should hear this month. But we're also, at the same time, submitting for a water grant as a contingency plan. We, we can't have both, but by applying for both of them in case one of them doesn't come through, we have something. We prefer to get the higher in one, but, you know, we don't get to pick that. Um, the Conway School of Landscape Design had approached the town a month or so ago about if there was any projects we want. And in a preliminary discussion on October twenty-fourth at our Conservation Commission meeting, Bruce Dedman, who is their executive director, came in, um, gave the other members, myself, a nice overview of what they could do, so that's very positive. Since then, I've had a follow-up discussion and email with Kristen Thomas, who is their project manager. And she spoke in with their faculty and they would, based on the projects we suggested, they wanted to narrow it down between working at the Whittmore Conservation Area and the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary to perhaps, uh, sketch in more trails and more to look at the connectivity between other properties. I've talked to Michael Buehler, so it would be, what could we do on the Conservation Commission trails that, when you get the greenway in, that'll tie in nicely and that sort of thing. So it was very positive. The Zipta Barn, well, the last Conservation Commission meeting began with people coming in saying that the roof was flying off. And my understanding is you had the fire department nail it down, thank you, because when Jackie called me, it's like, do you think I'm going to go up there and nail it down? No. But nevertheless. So we went from having a project where I was contacting fourteen roofers, almost all of whom who said, sorry, no, to patch the roof, to now looking for a roofer to replace the roof. However, then my understanding from community preservation is we would do restoration, not just replacing roofs that we let decay. So now I'm not looking for a metal roof. I have to work with the historical commission to see what was the original roof on that building. So I get to learn something else.
Be aware that if you pull that roofing up, there might be original asphalt roofing. Sometimes asphalt roofing of that era had asbestos in it.
Oh, good. Thank you. And I can add hazmat to my...
I just want you to get a broad scope appreciation of how this all works.
I thank you so much.
Your building inspector's here. You could ask your building inspector.
Alrighty.
Will the...
And I particularly would like to thank you for not having the video on. Yes. The barn doors will be painted by Nicole Fletcher, so I'd like to say thank you to Nicole because that saves money. And because the family is licensed for both parts of the Zipta property, that takes care of liability.
Speaking, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Speaking of liability, uh, you may want to take and get some prices to demo the silo.
Okay. Which also brings up to, um, should I be getting prices to remove the stuff in the bottom floor of it, which was from the demo of the stabilization? Sure, so.
I'm not saying we're gonna have funding for it, but it would be good.
We need to know how much it would cost to do that, but...
I, I was gonna, we're just kind of talking across. If that's, falls under Chapter one forty-nine, she just can't go out and get quotes unless it's under the threshold, so. Because that happened with the Zipta barn repair.
Though, the one thing in our favor is as of November seventh, the threshold numbers change. We like when numbers change and go up.
It went up to fifty. And, um, at the last community, uh, preservation meeting, the, um, I'm sorry, I'm forget- Tiffany was kind enough to send us links, those of us who wanted to. She sent us links about all the new procurement. So I was very happy to see that under ten, it's use your judgment professional and business-wise. Ten to fifty now is three bids and only after fifty do you have to do that other stuff.
You said three bids. You're talking about three quotes?
Three quotes, yes. Three, three, good quotes, yes. But, and comparing apples to apples, so we're aware. Um, we can make a mistake once, we're not gonna make it again, thank you. But I did want to ask for your permission, speaking of junk to be removed from the barn, the bottom floor is the, from reconstruction. The second floor is fire department stuff. I would rather have it be on the fire department's dime than the Conservation Commission's dime. So can we ask them to please get the fire department-related junk out of the second floor? I will be happy to unlock the door for them.
Heather, you mind sending a memo over to the fire chief and telling him to remove his junk?
By what timeframe do we want to do that?
Within the next thirty days.
That works for me. The police department also has a key, but as do I. Um, the...
I have one that I didn't know I had. It's down there all the time.
They're everywhere. Um, the Conservation Commission at our next meeting will be discussing, um, Bob Fletcher's renewed license because we have the tenure, but now what's in it, we want to talk about. The Water Commission also will be discussing it. And then we'll have to have a joint conversation or correspondence so that we can come up with something that works for both the Water Department and the Conservation Commission and Bob, and then present that to you for your vote at some point in December.
Sure.
So we're doing that. We are looking for volunteers, even if it's only for a one-time deal. We don't necessarily have to have someone make a commitment like the members of the Conservation Commission do. If you can give us one day to walk on the trail and then send back an email to concom@townofsouthampton.org to say, there's a tree down across the path. We've had some strong winds. There's no doubt that trees have come down. Probably not as much as on my property, but nevertheless, we're looking for volunteers. And then if you want to help weed whack a trail, but we have to sign the liability and have that understanding. Um, we're also going to reach out to Hampshire Regional, excuse me, high school because my understanding is that they have a community service obligation. So again, if we can engage some of the folks to do that, that would be good. Heather said that after I make the original contact with them, then anytime I'm in contact, just to copy the select board, so you know what we're doing. But, um, I guess some of the kids, because they play sports, it's harder for them to do community service. We can be really flexible. You know, go out there and tell us what's going on. Just don't skip school. Okay. Um, we've, um, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has brought up the, um, concept of the shared conservation agent with East Hampton again. Uh, the Conservation Commission will talk about it at our next meeting. Several years ago, we thought it was a good idea, but then the state funding dried up. Our only concern is that if this grant is only for one year, if it obligates you to do something after that and we know the town has funding limitations, then we don't want to put the town into a... then we don't wanna put the town into a position that you can't afford. If we can get something for one year, that would be great.
Stop for a second on that. Problem with that grant is it needs to be signed by the fifteenth. So even if Conservation meets on it, we're not gonna be meeting until after the deadline.
Oh, call a special meeting.
What I was thinking is if you just wanted to vote to authorize me to sign it, if I don't see anything and the conservation's in concert, as long as it's not obligating the town to fund something down the road, it would just keep the process going. Just to keep it simplified.
And you've got the right background in there, so you'd recognize anything.
Well, I'm not an expert, but if it says we have to pay.
The best we got, Charlie.
Yeah, I know. If we have to pay after a year, that usually gets my attention.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Discussions?
Yeah, I think I'd go on with that, yeah.
It's just simplifying things for everybody, that's all.
Due to the time, I think it makes it reasonable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Let me get easier on both of us this way.
Can I ask a question? And probably for more Virginia, but if we find asbestos under that roof, does CPA funds, would that cover that as part of the restoration?
It depend, uh, well, it depends on, um, what you're doing. If it's a restoration, we can pay. If you're simply repairing.
Right. So if they strip it all off, find asbestos, but put it back to what it was originally, that's okay?
Yeah, and the thing is, you have to find out what it was originally, and it could be shingles.
Yeah.
It could be that old building.
I don't think it's wood shakes. I think it's that, uh, asphalt.
Well, wood shakes, you can see from the inside if they're still there.
Yeah, maybe there's nothing there.
You have to find the, uh, what it is.
Yeah.
And it has to go back to that for CPA.
So you have to have proof pretty positive that whatever it was, that you're o- you're okay with it? So could we end up with the roof being off and?
Then she had, Marla will have to have the Conservation Commission bring a project to us and go through the town meeting, which is what everybody has to do.
So you can't rip the roof off until you know and it goes through the process, oh yeah.
I assure you, I'm not going to rip the roof off.
I wonder, how do you, how do you find out, you know, what's under there?
Well, the, the part of it just blew off, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Fire department was up there.
It didn't really blow off. They were flapping, 'cause like the bottom, you know, they're nailed, uh, big metal plates are nailed, so the bottom ends were off, but they were all there just.
Couldn't see what's under it, though. That would've been great if the fire department had an idea.
If somebody took a ladder up there, it'd be relatively easy to see. The concern I have is a lot of times they just put metal roofing on top of the asphalt shingles. They never bothered to strip anything. I just want to red flag it now, 'cause I didn't wanna see a, a repeat of, of us going so far down the road, then all of a sudden someone says, oh, by the way.
Charlie, do you have any idea what the age of it is?
That barn looks very similar to my barn. In my barn, we estimate it's somewhere around eighteen sixties.
Yes, he would. Right? He would know.
That's about mine, too, but I have slate on mine.
Yeah, the, they were, we were poor farmers. We didn't have slate.
So you're basically saying when the Zipta people were there, it was already old?
Yeah.
Okay.
Only because it's, it's peg beams and stuff.
We'll find out.
Your building inspector can explain this more than me. I'm just the chairman of the selection. He's far more articulate than I am in those structural issues.
Well, I, I'm just excited to know that now I have this too. Yay.
You are really branching out. I get it very.
Yes, I am. Alright, so we have the shared conservation agent. So now the next thing on the agenda is to ask for your permission so we could hire a local attorney for deed research when we need to. I had, Charlie suggested and asked, um, I, I ended up asking Mike in the assessor's office. And the property in question, and I don't wanna get into the property now, 'cause until we research, there's no point stirring up a kerfluffle. But the deed goes back to the eighteen somethings or others. The online version of deeds is only since nineteen forty. We gotta go back further, which involves going, I guess, to the registry of deeds and going through old papers, which sounds fascinating. But yet, in my list of things I'm learning how to do, I'm not really, I think I wanna get into with the dust mites, so I'm thinking, so for, it would be less expensive to hire someone local who's familiar with it, and we would ask multiple attorneys, who are local, if they could do the work, but just to do a little more digging into the deeds regarding easements and what grants. Anyway, so can we spend our own Conservation Commission money, which we get from fees and everything, without going to the town attorney when we need research? That's beyond the scope of here.
You don't wanna go to the town attorney, though, right?
I do not, because they don't live around here and they're very expensive.
It's cheaper to hire.
No, I thought you just said to go to the town attorney.
I do not want to go to the town attorney.
I could use on that email. And, I mean, basically, the idea was to find out if, if, when the town motioned to buy it. And it was basically just an easement the town bought. They didn't buy the property.
It was back before the nineteen forty's?
Yeah, we're not seeing it by looking here online. But there's other things like that, too.
Well, I guess my question is, do you know if this is town-owned property or just easements that the town?
The wording we have says easement.
Then you are going to need an attorney to do a title search and find out what's there in my.
That is what we thought, but we don't wanna pay the one in Boston.
Right.
So you're just asking if you can use your own monies?
Yes.
But you need to ask for it. They're the only people who can spend that.
Right, so I, I'm, that's why I'm.
I just know in years past, different iterations of the select board and the Conservation Commission, when the Conservation Commission asked, because we were told, you can't use the town attorney, we're not gonna pay for it. We said, can we use our own? And we were told, no. But that was years ago, so this is why I'm confirming before we go spend any money.
Well, for just assurances, do I hear a motion to authorize the Conservation Commission to utilize its own funds to bid research?
I'll make that motion.
We really have to vote on this? I thought that was standard.
We would even have to vote that.
I don't think we have to vote on that.
It's ridiculous. They should be able to do it.
We still need to put something in the minutes just to make her feel comfortable.
They can use their monies.
Well, how about we make a motion, we support them using, yeah, put a, yeah.
Motion made to support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're obviously two more, too easygoing for you.
I just need it official, because we don't wanna mess up on anything. We don't wanna now have attorneys that we have to go to the state legislature to pay. You know, that wouldn't be good. Okay. And another project we're working on is a bridge, um, between East Hampton and Southampton, crossing the Manhand. Um, that involves work with the Pisgami Conservation Trust and two community preservations and two Conservation Commission. So, um, they came to our last meeting and talked to us about their involvement in it, and that discussion is ongoing. And permits and people calling you, like, why didn't you sign this, that sort of thing. So is there anything else you'd like to know?
You are so thorough.
I want you to, now my hat's off to you for the due diligence you've been doing in this commission. I understand the polling on all sides, that you're doing very well.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you for the lack of picture.
Are you guys all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, let's bring the building inspector up to bat.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
This town working quickly.
So, good, you?
Hey, Charlie, did we actually get a, uh, vote on those two motions that you made? We had the first one for giving authorization to Kinnicky to sign grant by Martin, seconded by Cutler, but we don't have a registration of a vote.
That was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Reported on that.
Okay, and then the second one right there, the support to give, or support given to allow Concom to use their own money, hiring an attorney? You voted on both of them and we slept through it? Okay, I'm sorry. We'll work on that.
You two are busy talking to each other. Tom?
Okay, I'll try to make it short. The, um,
Thank you.
First page explains the amount of permits we've done so far this, uh, year, and we're at four hundred and fifty-three, which includes, um, you know, the building sign, sheet metal, gas, plumbing and electric.
Hey, hey, Tom?
Next would show the revenue that we've brought in with all of them added up, and we're at a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, which includes the plumbing, gas and electric as well. Um, e-permitting's working very well. Um, Jim Fisher actually is online now and is using one of the tablets. And seems, you know, helping things out a lot. It's all, you know, coming in quicker as far as knowing that he's signed off. And if a homeowner or contractor doesn't have a card, um, we do still have a few, uh, been, still getting a few bugs with the program, but they've been very quick to, to fix him. And they've actually come up, just as of yesterday, making it easier as far as entering things on it. They're improving it every day as well, which is nice. The, um, I guess the only thing we're still really working on is the zoning and, and bylaws and that. And I've been working with, I'm, I'm planning on going to the, um, bylaw committee, you know, meet with them in the next two weeks. Um, working with, you know, other boards as far as tomorrow, if you go into the zoning board, we have a couple lots, issues with lots and things coming up. So, you know, gonna go with them and meeting and try to keep up with all that. But, um, once we get all the, the new, hopefully zoning in the next year, front of the town and voted in, make things a little easier there, to update all. Otherwise, everything's going great.
Very good.
Tom, I don't see any notations relative to any activity relative to being the zoning enforcement officer. Could you, when you do this in the future?
Sure.
Something as to how many enforcement actions you're taking?
Sure.
So that we have a better handle on this. I mean, this is good. I got no problem with that, but.
Right.
When I was listening at town meeting and people were discussing things, they seemed to forget the fact that you're the zoning enforcement officer and there's other things you're doing that aren't tied to the building permit.
Right, right. I had three literally this afternoon. I wasn't able to make the party, because I wanted to make sure I took care of them, just, you know, between four and six.
In the, the numbers here, and I know you're doing that. The other thing is, is as you know, we adopted non-criminal ticketing at the last town meeting, so think about what you might wanna see added to that, especially in your zoning.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
We will be re-bringing that to the town meeting for tweaking as time goes on.
Good, okay.
And?
Question, uh, on, and it came up at the town meeting, on the total permits as well as total revenue, can you give us a year-over-year, say for the last two years prior to this?
Sure.
So we can see a trend?
Okay. Okay, well, it's been.
Email it or something?
Sure. It's been two years, I believe, since we went up in the rates, which of course, you know, added, but I think we're, I don't wanna just.
Yeah, just that when the question came up.
Right.
At the town meeting, we didn't have an answer, so it'd be nice to have this trend.
Yep. No, that'd be nice. I'll do a chart.
Okay.
Just say the last five years and.
Oh, okay, even if, if you can do five, that's fine, but three's fine?
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
At town meeting, we discussed trying to increase his pay for forty hours a week.
Well, his hours.
Hours, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm getting tired now. Would the board entertain a motion to take and, uh, submit this to personnel board for review?
The job description? The job? Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll make a motion that we do it, because whatever comes out, it comes out.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I have nothing to discuss.
Am I being polite? I swing like this to make sure that I'm seeing both sides, 'cause I.
Nothing to discuss. I voted to pay for the forty hours of work, remember?
Alright, so, do I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you two get that vote?
Submit job description to the triple P B for review by Martin, seconded by the group, towards you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, another question, because obviously we tried to go, because you're working more hours, and yet you're getting paid for what we originally hired you for. So I guess my question is, what, what do we do here? I mean, having somebody work that long, do we?
He should not.
Well, that was my question. It's kind of a, a work the rule, only do what you can do in your hours and then let the townspeople see what's not getting done? I mean, I, that's probably against your personal work ethic. I understand that, but.
Well, we're here for the public. I've had, actually had people say that, but I just couldn't do it. I mean, I, I'm available. I come in, you know, weekends, you know, if that works best for, you know, homeowner or even a contractor, whatever it be.
And we support you on that. I'm just, it didn't get you anywhere, you know, I'm, I believe in, if you're working forty hours, you should get paid for forty hours and.
So his contract reads thirty-one hours, correct, Tom?
Correct, yes.
So I say he works thirty-one hours, and he should not work over the thirty-one hours.
I think technically we're right, but like he says, his work ethic is.
Right, but in turn, he's gonna be working for free.
I don't, I don't think that the town peoples were, were against paying you for the forty hours. It was the method of where the money was coming from. So I think if we go down the right road, this may be resolved sooner than later.
But until then.
And this is a good start right here.
Until then, we are in a situation where we can't really do anything, other than show him a good faith effort to push this forward. Bringing it to the personnel board for their evaluation is gonna basically bring a recommendation back from them.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit. I, I think what I, at least I heard at the town meeting was, you know, the permits and everything are going down, the activity's going down. How could he possibly be working more hours than contracted with? So I think we need to, you being, all of us, show how you work in those hours. So by having more information available in, on the enforcement side, as well as year-over-year, I think, then we can make a case to the town, because I, I don't, I don't think they, uh, I don't know.
Nobody knows what anybody does here until they themselves personally use this service.
And I think it's our job to show what's going on, with obviously.
Okay.
Like, Mike, maybe Mike wants to speak on.
Right?
Charlie, you got somebody behind.
Yeah, Mike wanna talk on this.
Okay.
Let the board talk, if you guys want.
Yeah.
Michael?
Michael Rosenberg, one forty-four East Street. Um, just as a point of reference, so when the question came up about, um, growth in the department in regards to permitting and things, the only reference, at least from the finance committee's standpoint, was in regards to new growth. We didn't touch permits, we didn't touch, you know, zoning enforcement permitting, we didn't touch any of that. It was simply on new growth. So I don't know, maybe there was another reference about permits being done, but just being done, just so we're all clear. We didn't reference that, because I don't know the number from one year to the other.
I think that's the key. We gotta show the numbers.
Right, I think it's important.
So we appreciate you holding on while we go through the process.
Is there something else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, planning board?
Um, I talked to Paul Demon, and on behalf of Paul, he asked me to update what the planning board's doing. And, uh, right now, there's not a lot going on with subdivisions. We have only one in progress. Um, everything seems to be going well with that. The planning board has contracted with Larry Smith Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to help. And we're actually meeting tomorrow to review and go over the zoning bylaws that Tom was just talking about, to rewrite that. And we sent out, um, letters to all the departments to get their feedback, and we're working with that. So it is a public meeting, but not open to the public. We're gonna start putting together all the recommendations from the boards and where we think we should go. And then we will hold public meetings to get their input on it after that. And we're trying to do it in phases, so we don't overwhelm the, uh, town meeting people with the whole, maybe do it in three phases is what we're thinking. So, uh, that's pretty much all that's going on there.
Just, just to clarify, Jim, when you say it's a public meeting but not open to the people, I think what you're saying, as I interpret it, is this is a public meeting, anyone's welcome to come, but input from the public will not likely be solicited by the chair, but they're welcome. It's a public meeting, they come sit.
That is correct.
There'll be a time later down the road where you'll have a public hearing and allow people the opportunity for feedback.
You said that very well.
Okay, thanks. ZB.
ZBA?
Hi, I guess I'm now the ZBA person. Um, so I've been working as the ZBA's administrative, uh, human for the past couple of weeks. Uh, I've asked them to, uh, please either redo, revise the ZBA, uh, bylaws, in the zoning bylaws, or simply make rulings at their next meeting. They need to consider how they do the process. I'd like them to, and we've been saying this to them for two years, mirror the process that the planning board does, uh, where they put the Otis. where they put the Otis on the applicant to make sure that they put something in the newspaper, make sure that they notify all the abutters and so forth. My office has taken care of it, so that no deadlines are missed currently, where people are kind of stretched out at this moment, because we wanted to make sure we didn't miss any again. There are two hearings on for tomorrow night. One is for Five Duggan Lane, which is being revisited. The last time a variance was issued in 2010. There'll be a, um, they have to apply again, because their timeline has expired. So they will be applying for that tomorrow. And there is another property, and I want to say it's Gilbert Road, but I do not have it in my head. And then there'll be another, um, hearing coming up. I believe it's going to be the week of the twentieth of November. It's a Monday for 104 College Highway, if we can get it advertised in time. And I think there might be one more coming, but I think at this point, my office is stretched to what they can do to assist.
Park commission?
Oh, actually, I do.
You do, you do.
I lied. Okay, so, so the park commission, I'm not the liaison, by the way, to any of these boards. But the park commission, so where they are with the Conant Park roof, if you remember a while ago, CPC at a town meeting, I believe it was the annual, had the town vote to, an article to appropriate a certain amount of funds to redo the Conant Park Pavilion Roof. We are moving forward with that. They are waiting to take advantage as well of the change of the procurement laws for chapter 149 as of November seventh. And how those essentially are is when Marla was citing to them, she's correct, it's ten to fifty thousand. You actually have to have a written description of what you're looking for. You have to then solicit at least three responses, but you also have to post it on COMBIES. You have to post it on the central register and you have to post it on your website and the local clerk's office, which we will take care of. But the nice thing is, we don't have to do a newspaper advertisement. We also don't have to do a formal bid process. We're just doing solicitation of bids, which is nice. And just a reminder, chapter 149's about your guess of what the cost of the project's going to be, not the actual cost. So if all your information tells you it's going to be a forty-nine thousand dollar project, you follow this procurement rule, it comes back in as seventy-nine thousand, you're still covered, because based on good faith, the number you used is what you went out to, for the bidding procurement rules on.
Tree warden? Statement from the tree warden, his budget concerns. We had a situation on Gilbert Road there a couple of months ago, where a number of trees came down across the street, so on and so forth. So, no pun intended, that sort of cut into his budget.
Way too late for that.
You like that? No? Michael, was it any good? No? All right, I, I tried, you know. All right, I think the next thing we'll bring up is going to be Vicki Moore, town accountant, on uncollected ambulance bills. I am trying to hit people with small pieces, so that they can go home.
Sorry, we're...
Bernie?
Take your time.
Okay. I guess I don't need these papers. So, um, I was able to get some information from the fire chief and from, the name of the place, oh, coastal medical, um, coastal medical billing on their process and what they do to collect overdue bills. And I can forward this to you, what the chief sent me. So, there's a certain process that they go through with insurance bills and then with private bills. And then in May of that particular, you know, there are certain timeframes where sixty days, thirty days, forty-five days, they do certain billings to the insurance company and to different individual. They send certain letters, um, you know, final collection notices, all that kind of stuff. But in May, they send an annual review to the fire chiefs, or who's ever responsible for the billings. And they go through it and determine what's uncollectible and what's, um, still viable. And then what they do is they go through that and they will write it off before June thirtieth. So, and I have to get in touch with Lauren to determine, like, how do they determine what's uncollectible and what's not? So in going through our, as of June thirtieth, the fire chief and, um, Lauren from coastal billing went through and wrote off, the billings that were old, which was... Total, sorry. Where's my total? It's like fifty-nine thousand dollars. So they went all the way back to 2006. So we had, you know, collectibles that were ten years old.
So, a quick, quick question. So we're up to date now on all the old aging?
Correct. So what they do is they'll give me a list of every person that's uncollectible. This is what they wrote off. So they sent me this list. And it, you know, gives you the call number, the patient, whatever their code is, the call date. And then they wrote abatement, which is kind of like your taxes. They abated it. And it's bad, or the people are deceased. So I went through and added up per year how much they wrote off in uncollectibles, per year. And so, um, you know, in 2006, there was twenty-one hundred bucks. The total was fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. The most that was written off was in 2011, was twelve thousand dollars. But if you take it as a percentage of what we actually billed, you know, the highest was in 2012, which was three point three percent. Everything else is point four percent, point two percent. And on average, over the past five years, we've, um, billed out two hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five bucks. Now, what happens is, is they do, do adjustments throughout the year, when they do their billing, based on information they don't, stuff they don't, you know, they, the insurance company, you know, somehow the billing, the insurance company doesn't pay, the people are, um, their Medicare things get adjusted. And so, um, those adjustments happen during the year too. But what I've done is I've gone through and made sure that the credits that they received and what the town payments received matched my books. So anything they've said on their summary sheet that they've collected, or they've gotten credit for, matched my books. And there's also a call sheet that they have, which the fire chief is now going to, um, you know, him and I are going to work on that, where he has to match that to his call list, because I have a call list that they give me. So I know, you know, that in June of 2012, we billed twenty-four thousand dollars and some change. It'll give me each person how much each, each call was billed. So I think what we should do going forward is that, um, you know, if in fact Coastal's, um, procedure is that in May, they give the information to the fire chief, I need to sit with the fire chief and go over that with her and him, and then bring those numbers to you to say, hey,
What do you want?
We got twelve hundred dollars, that's bad. What do you want to do? If we think it's collectible, then I think Coastal, if they aren't going to particularly do anything with them after that fact, then we can take the next step as a town, if we choose, to actually send a bill out and whatnot. I did get some information from some other communities. Um, one community, I got three responses, so. One community actually lets Coastal handle the whole thing altogether. One community, um, gives the fire chief, the select board gave the fire chief permission to write off up to a certain amount. Was Wes Boylston, you know, I think it was maybe five thousand dollars, that he was able to tell the company that they use, you know what? You can write up to five thousand bucks if you think it's totally uncollectible. You know, those types of things are things that we can look at, you know, to do going forward, so.
I got a couple of questions.
You said three, three responses.
I got three responses, but two were the same, to where they let the billing company do everything on their own.
A couple of things. One is that if they do the report every May, some of those could be a year old before they come to the town saying they haven't paid, what do you want to do, which is a long period of time before we see those. And, and the other one is what they determine is uncollectible. They're a billing company and they send out, it sounds like, five letters that have no teeth to them. And people, having done this enough years, people realize that it's not a collection agency. It is just a letter-writing agency. I get my fifth one, they go away and it gets written off. So if we want to truly collect this, we need to have a little different setup here, because if, if somebody doesn't give me a bill for a year, I'm thinking that's not too important. So unless they say it's going to hit your credit report, and we can report these to the credit bureaus, and that's, that has teeth. I don't know about you, but if I got something, never have, uh, if I got something that says it's being reported to the credit bureau, I'm going to pay attention to it.
You know, so if it's an insurance bill, after, um, you know, after so many days, it goes into IN, I N S C O L L, I don't know what that is. I'd have to ask her that question. And then it gets to be reviewed by Coastal and it gets followed up with the insurance company. If it's a private bill pay, it goes into collections, it gets reviewed, and it either goes to a collection agency or it gets written off after the town reviews it.
But if it's through an insurance agency, you get an EOB, an explanation of benefit, saying, here's what they billed us, here's the usual and customary, here's what we paid, you are responsible for this amount, you are not responsible for that amount. So the person through an insurance company knows exactly what they're responsible for.
So if you look at the past, so like in 2012, we wrote off ninety-five hundred bucks, but in 2013, we wrote off five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixteen cents. 2014 was fourteen hundred bucks, and 2015 was eleven hundred bucks.
But I think you also said that the chief can go through during the year and say, okay, we're not, we'll make adjustments throughout the year.
That's, the coastal billing does that piece. That's, they, whatever they bill, they, they make specific adjustments, which I need to, you know, get a better handle on getting that explained to Lauren, because I'm not an insurance person. You know, they make those adjustments based on the billing. This is the uncollectible piece. This is what we were talking about, what was uncollectible.
I guess I'm trying to define what uncollectible means to a billing agency, Don.
I mean, I, I think the adjustments that Coastal...
You gotta come up to the, sorry.
Sorry. I think the adjustments that Coastal make during the year are simply adjustments, because either, like, when they bill Medicare, your insurance company, only so much is allowed.
So usual and customary.
You know, just like any other doctor's office, you usually see when you get your, your statement of benefits or whatever. This is the amount that was charged, this is the amount that's allowed per our plan, and this is the amount we're going to pay, and this is the copayment that's due by you.
Yeah, it shows on that EOB.
So their adjustments are in that, that category, where they make, you know, they make adjustments because either Medicare or the insurance company contracts that they have that don't allow, you know, a certain amount. I mean, I think that most of what was billed and being written off were people's copays. Pretty much, mostly everyone has insurance, and so the insurance was billed. You can bet that Coastal is going to bill, if, if they get a bill back from an insurance company or Medicare, because it's not submitted correctly, their fee is based on a percentage of what they collect. So they turn around and resubmit that bill to the insurance company or Medicare to make sure they get the majority of it, right? That's where they get their bread and butter. When it's a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred dollars, it's a copayment for someone, tho- those are the things that were being written off.
Or self-pays.
Or self-pays.
Right.
But, I mean, these are all, these from, are from September, these are all insurance-related.
So the copays, again, the people know it, because they get an explanation of benefits, saying, here's what you owe, and they're just not paying.
And then they're getting the bills too, from Coastal. They're getting bills. So they're just, yeah, they're, they think that it's either the habitual offenders and, and they know that we're not, that we're not going to push it, or that they think it's not going to hit their credit report. There's no long-term way to collect it.
So if, do you know if in those five letters, again, the ones I've seen, never mentioned, it's going to hit your credit, uh, report? Because they could easily report to the credit bureaus, and that incentive on, on the letter, if you will, could make...
Well, and I think that they're, this, when they gave the list in May to the fire chief, you know, this obviously had to be new, if they went all the way back to 2006. It's not something that they've been doing on an annual basis, or they wouldn't have had to go back, back ten years. So this was something that they just decided to do to clean up a lot of the problem.
But if the previous person didn't do anything with it, if the fire department didn't do anything with it for ten years, then, then how do we know that they didn't do that, I guess? You know what I mean? Like, if the other fire chiefs didn't do anything with it and they just left it.
Oh, right, what are we gonna do?
I don't know, I don't know which way it is. This fire chief's been here for a couple of years, so he would have gotten one before this year too. You know what I'm, I'm just saying, that I think that...
So do we want to pursue stricter collection, uh, tactics, if you will?
I mean, if you look at the, the past, like I said, the past few years,
Well, it's nothing.
It's under two thousand dollars every year, since 2013, fourteen, fifteen.
It's five hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred. I just think we should have a... But should we have a policy that they follow?
Well, I don't know if they can allow this, but is there any preference to residents? Isn't that legal? So if there's a resident in town that...
Yeah, I have, yeah, yeah, I have.
Back in the dark ages, when I was on the committee, the fire chief had the authorization to waive anybody if he felt that there was extenuating circumstances. That was a long time ago. That's all changed now. I'm looking at a three percent uncollectible over the year.
That is very good.
I, I, I would just leave it as it is. It's obvious everybody's been...
She said point two percent.
Right. But what was, that's the uncollectible piece. It's not the adjusted piece of, you know, like Donna was talking about, the, that piece. That's just what was, versus what we billed out, versus what we, we couldn't collect. Not anything they adjusted, because the insurance didn't pay and whatnot, so.
When you said five-year, was it an average of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand per year, or was it total for five years?
No, two hundred and eighty-seven per year was what we billed out, an average, correct.
I think that's a pretty good, uh, collection rate.
Yeah, I just leave it as it is. It wouldn't disturb it. You know, the only issue I had with this was there was a rumor floating around town that we had over three hundred thousand dollars of uncollected bills.
No, that's what's billed out.
That's not the truth. That was just what was circulating in the gossip wind.
So that's why we got the information.
And so now that, um, I understand this a little better, and this was something that, you know, I kind of kept pushing off doing, you know, I can, we, I can be more on top of this and, and getting the, the detailed reports to make sure they tie to what I have and all that kind of stuff. And if obviously something comes up that is way out of whack, we can have that discussion.
One more thing. How long has Coastal been doing the collections for us, billing?
Two thousand and six.
That's, okay.
So they have some records upstairs from 2003, 2004, of whoever was doing it before.
Monica.
Yeah, I know we used to do it internally, for a while. I was wondering when we made that switch.
But that was prior to 2006. So, and most communities, because I asked the chief, like, maybe a year or so ago, about switching, and is there anybody else? And, you know, ninety-nine percent of the communities use Coastal, and there's one or two other companies that use another company that kind of isn't, I mean, not that you should use what everyone else is using, but if it's working for most fire departments and ambulance services, then maybe want to use it.
Yeah, I think it's a good collection rate, so.
So, you're welcome.
And right now, the big insurance companies, like this Ross, and then, you know, we get the money directly to the deposit, our ambulance, so Coastal tracks that, but, you know, they're, they're not writing a check, they're doing a transfer, you know, to pay those bills. So we get the money from there.
But it's in the two eighty-seven.
That's what we billed out. And so, so if you, so this sheet, if you look at it, I'll show it to you.
This is what I get from Coastal. So this has what they billed, and I have a, I have a detail of what was billed, the credits, which are payments that, that they would have gotten, and this is what we receive. So I can match these to what Donna posted in the general ledger. And so, then what happens is I, at the end of the year, adjusted this coastal balance. So now I'm going to have to start booking commitments, like I do with everything else, like if it was a tax, or like water usage, that kind of thing, so that my books will balance to what they have.
Okay, so how much do we receive a year on average, our portion of it?
Slightly less than two eighty-seven on average. She had two eighty-seven on average for five years, and we're almost, you know...
But that's the billing before the write-offs, I think.
I'd have to look at what we collected, but I don't have the sixteen.
That two eighty-seven?
Oh, we don't, oh, you, how much we pay Coastal, how much we've collected altogether.
How much do we get from, uh, the collections? Net. That two eighty-seven was billing. That, does that include write-offs?
No.
So that's before write-offs? So what, what are net be?
See, and they haven't been doing the write-offs on a regular basis, so you'd have to take the total bill, adjustments, you know...
So two eighty-seven sounds good, but that's not what we get.
Your actual payments were.
I remember it, it's going to be low two hundreds. I think that's what went into the ambulance fund last year.
So, you know... So, you know, it's a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
That we bring in out of the two eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Well, that's just-
That we collect, I mean, that we actually get paid. We physically get paid. Which goes right into the ambulance receipts reserve that we use to-
What percent do we lose for Co- what does Coastal charge?
I don't know, seven thousand dollars.
It's not a percentage, though, it's, isn't it?
Of collected or of billed?
Yeah, their budget's always been seven thousand, and we haven't ever hit that seven thousand dollar mark, so it's six or seven.
But do they deduct their fee before they give it to us, so we don't track?
No, we pay bills, we pay a bill for them.
Okay, so no more than seven thousand?
It hasn't been since I've been here, no.
Okay.
So, so far this year, in two thousand F Y seventeen, we've paid nineteen hundred and thirty-six bucks.
Yeah, not worth doing it ourselves.
Well, if you had an administrator over there, maybe we could.
Well-
Billing? No.
Now, that's a big-
So much is electronic now and dealing with the insurance companies, I think that we're much better at dealing with the company.
You've gotta know the rules.
Much more streamlined than to have one person try and make it almost home, there'll be a new learning order.
You gotta keep updated on all the laws, too.
Yeah, the rules and regulations to do that, it's huge.
Right. They reject them if you have the wrong code, and you, you know, it's not worth it.
Have we seen any issues with, I mean, I've seen this in the past, um, where the, uh, insurance company actually sends a check to the, um, insured,
Patient?
and that, and the patient has to then endorse it and send it in? Have you seen that?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just curious if any of that was the difference between the-
Well, if the uncollectibles were so small, that's not really happening.
Yeah.
The insurance companies do that for a minute?
Yeah, I've gotten checks, um, for medical treatment. Yeah, the checks come to the house, and then we, in turn, pay the bill.
You know, maybe-
There's no way we would know that, if they don't.
I know it's out there, I know it, it's, it could be a factor down the road.
You know, so two thousand and twelve was a big year. There's a few people that owed, you know, quite a bit of money, so that was the big year where we had a lot of money that we wrote off, so. You know, like in two thousand thirteen, you know, we wrote off, whatever, five hundred and ninety-nine bucks, well, two people died. So we, so we brought off really a hundred and fifty bucks, so, yeah.
Is there a statute of limitations on how far we can go back on something like that?
To collect? I think the insurance companies, um, they can only go back, I think it's two years, maybe, I don't know, I don't, I don't really know for sure.
But usually, it's not the insurance company that still owes.
That still owes, it's usually whatever the other person's, yeah.
Even if it was an individual, I mean, is there a statute of limitations, and how far you can collect back on a bill?
I don't think so. Because, you know, we have motor vehicles that we recommit that's from nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen eighty-seven, you know?
I did one of those.
There's a statute of law that-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's probably different, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't have that answer.
Okay, I'm just curious.
So anyway, that's the scoop that I have for today.
Donna, outstanding property taxes.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so I just wanted to start with kind of an overview of what the process is for tax titles and outstanding property taxes. So, we start off by fiscal sixteen taxes, say, were due on May first of this year. By the end of May, we send out the demand notices for the year. Then usually in September, we send, September, October, we send our first letter, saying, you know, here's a statement, you still owe a balance for sixteen. Over the next few months, we'll send a couple more letters, try and get people to enter into payment agreements, or, you know, just pay it off, or whatever. So then, generally by April, we have, we put into tax title, which just means that the town formally places a lien to protect their interest on the property. It's a recording of a lien, okay? And the interest rate goes from fourteen percent, which is mass general law, to sixteen percent when it's in tax title, so the interest changes. So then, once it's in tax title, the town is secured a lien, and we have some properties that go back to way before me, like nineteen eighty-nine, that have been in tax title, and nothing was ever done. So, I'm in the process of working with three, three different properties right now that we are using our, because we just got, received a payment recently for someone who redeemed their property. So now we have money in the tax title revolving fund to help pay for the cost, because it costs us to use our attorney. It costs five hundred and fifteen dollars to file in land court the petition to foreclose, in addition to the legal fees, just for the attorney checking up and providing any information, or dealing with, uh, the property owners, or whatever.
Do those costs get added to the lien?
They do, if-
They pay it.
If they pay it.
If they don't pay it, it's just another number.
So, the one that recently paid off, um, you know, it was forty, i- i- in, in the end, it was forty-something thousand dollars. Six of that was legal fees and such that I could put into the tax title revolving account, okay? Some of these, it's really hard because they've grown to large amounts, because they've been let go for so long. And it's not an easy thing to, if it's, if it's just a, a piece of land, it's one thing, but when it's someone's residence, generally, these properties do not have a mortgage, because otherwise the bank would step in, because the town is in first place before a bank, if there's a tax title. And, and so a lot of these people don't have means to, you know, either they can't get a loan, or they, I mean, I don't know. There's a lot of different situations, but I've been trying, so we have, one that we just filed a petition on, two that we potentially will, that we're trying to work with the homeowners to see if they can, um, figure out a plan. We don't try, we try to have, if there's gonna, if someone's gonna enter into a payment agreement, unlike, I have a couple people that pay on payment agreements that were agreed to before my time, and what they pay per month doesn't come close to even covering the interest. So it's just adding on and adding on, hundreds of dollars every month, and then it's compounding with the added interest, because they never should've agreed to a hundred dollars a month.
Well, can't we reopen those? I mean, we're not helping.
We're not, we're not bound by them anymore, I mean, it, once two years passes, it's, we're, it, we're not bound to an agreement that was signed.
I mean, it seems like we're hurting the owners by letting it go on and on, because that's sixteen percent, we're burying them.
Right, right.
So it seems like the sooner we do it, the better it is for everybody.
Correct, and the easier it is for them to get out of it. The hard part is going after the ones that, like I said, that have been in for so long, and they just kinda, you know, they didn't deal with it, and so now, all of a sudden, it seems unsurmountable for them to be able to. But I believe that there's still, in, in the homes, the residences, there is still equity in those homes. So although it's not a perfect solution, and no one wants to see someone lose their home, if they chose to not, if they chose to sell the property, pay the town off, and recu- and keep the balance of the equity to get a start somewhere else, at least it's better than the town just taking it. But it's, it's not our intention, at least it's not my intention, to, to try and kick someone out of their house, take the property, and have them end up with nothing, which is what happens when you foreclose on a property, and that, and you get judgment of, you know, you get a judgment deed. Then the, the owner, you, gets nothing. They don't get, you know, what's left over after the town is paid, they get nothing. We have the right to turn around and sell that property for whatever it's worth, and we get whatever it's worth, even if it's a hundred thousand more than what was owed.
Now, what happens when we let it go on so long, they're upside down, and it's worth more than the value is, I mean, they can't get-
Right, I, I mean, I don't think we're in that situation with any of these properties.
It's heading that way.
Yeah, I mean-
You know, so, and you don't wanna see somebody enter an agreement either that they can't, they can't handle, that they can't do. You know, they might say, I can pay this much money, but, um, so generally, it's in three years. We, we advertise the debt and the current taxes over three years, and if they can pay that monthly payment, or, you know, have a plan, maybe they can get a home equity loan, maybe they can, you know, do something like that to pay it off. Because to go beyond the five years, you, you just don't know what the condition of the property will be in, and, and how that's gonna affect the whole situation, so.
So how many of these that go back that far?
There's not that many that go back that far. There's like five or six. I have another one who, um, you know, I've just been in, in talks with her myself, and encouraged her, because it was a rental, she wasn't living in it, she was just trying to rent it, but it needs a lot of repairs. She's selling it, supposed to close in a couple weeks, so that's gonna be another forty thousand.
And the lien's on the property? So they, they got, there's a lien on the property?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So they can't sell it without paying?
No, the taxes will be paid, we already did the municipal lien certificate, and, you know, so that, that money will be collected, but, and she'll end up with something, you know, the equity out of the house after the, the debt is paid.
So the other old ones, how much is that total that's owed? You know, the four or five old ones that have been around a long time, roughly?
Probably about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, the old ones.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we wanna be sympathetic, but by being sympathetic, we're running some of them into the ground, or we're gonna force them to be bankrupt. So I, I would rather be stronger with them earlier, because it's better for them, even though they don't think about it at the time.
And so, I'm, you know, I, I feel like I'm doing what I can with, when I first started, the budget was ten thousand dollars a year, and we weren't really foreclosing on any properties then, we were just paying out a lot in fees for, I'm not sure what. But now, I only have three thousand dollars, and then I got this influx to put into the revolving fund of the six thousand. But, you know, it, it's not gonna go, I, I can't do too many properties at once, because there's, you know, I get monthly bills from the attorney that's handling this, so unless the town is, you know, I, at some point, I might need to go back to the finance committee or the town meeting and say, I need ten thousand dollars, so that, so that we can get a hundred thousand back, or, you know.
Oh, I, I, that makes sense to me, I mean-
I think it's time to ask for that money.
Yeah, now, if an attorney, if you give them three or four, is there an economy of scale where they do it all for a, a lower cost?
They don't really do it for a lower cost, but if they're, if they're dealing with land court and they've got three at the same time, then, and they can cover three in a day when they go to the land court, then certainly you're saving, rather than completing one and then going to the next one. You know, because if they can do it in the same day, then you're not paying travel, and you're not paying, you know, but you're gonna pay anyway, you're not paying it twice.
You were saying that the bills go out in May, and then you send out a letter, and then-
Well, the bills, well, the four bills go out, and then a demand bill goes out, which adds the late, the interest and the late fee. And then in the fall, we send another bill, because the, each fiscal year is separate into itself. And so, uh, although if someone owes for sixteen and they get their seventeen bill, we do stamp on there that pre- prior year taxes unpaid. There is a stamp on the bill. So they are aware that they have a prior year, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't list the amount, because that changes day to day, depending on the interest. Then we do, we do a series of letters, leading up to, if we don't receive payment by, say, March thirtieth, or whatever date we determine in the spring, then we're gonna advertise, and if it's not paid by the fourteen days after you advertise, then you put a tax title lien on it, which is really just a formal lien on the property that's filed with the registry of deeds.
But then it seems like we just let it draw out. I mean, that's, that hundred fifty thousand, or whatever it is, you know, second shift on the fire department, three teachers at the school, I mean, that's, I'm sorry that the people have to pay, but, you know, we all have to pay the taxes, and if they have to sell their house in order to pay it off, they still get, like you said, the extra money to continue from there, and if we, if we take it from them, they're getting nothing, so I hate to see people get driven into the ground with that sixteen percent.
But, and it just seems like we do it in a long span of the letters. Do you know what I mean? Like, there's like so much time, I mean, you're already paying your taxes over an entire year, and then-
It's pretty, it's pretty standard, it's, I mean, there's a lot of towns that don't put the tax title lien on, and so you, you, you don't run the risk of losing the lien until, I think it's two years and nine months after the bill is due, or something like that. I don't know exactly, but it's, and we generally have, like, right now, fifteen, we have like five people that still owe for fifteen that are make, that are in payment agreements. Everyone else is in tax title that hasn't paid, you know, so.
The ones in pay-
You know, we're on top of it in that regard, as far as getting the liens on timely, and-
Yeah, you're doing your part, yeah.
I guess the other question is, if, going back, fifteen people in payment schedules, how many of those fifteen are living up to it? And if they don't, it seems like we just let them go on.
No, I mean, that's, you know, I have one right now that, you know, has made a couple promises and hasn't, so they're gonna be advertised again, and then, you know, that's just to get the lien on, and, um, so, I mean, there's so many other things, it's not always forefront. I'm do, you know, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm doing my best now, I'm go, you know, I'm, I'm going after a few of these, we can't do them all at once. Contacting some of the people that owe smaller amounts to see if they, you know, that have only been in tax title for a year or two, see if we can get that cleaned up before it gets, before it gets worse. You know, some of it's a money issue, and having the funds to be able to pay the attorney to go through the process and do all that.
I mean, I'm in favor of putting money on the January town meeting to go after, to hire the attorney to help her out here. That's what you're, you need, right?
I mean, I guess I'll know more as it gets closer to January, I mean, but I, I have a feeling that that six thousand's probably gonna be spent just with these three properties that I'm, you know, dealing with, probably close to spent by January or February, you know?
How old are these three properties, roughly? Are they?
Uh, like eighty-nine, ninety-two.
Wow, okay.
When were they built, or how?
No, that's when they, that's when the initial lien was placed.
It's too old, it's too-
Yeah, that's, that's-
I can't imagine, I can't imagine how it gets that far.
I could see a five-year max, and then we move.
It's gonna be the-
Twenty-five years, twenty-six years.
You know, one of the properties, and I don't wanna, you know, say which property it is, but one of the properties, there was a D E P issue on the property, and so during that time, we were advi- you know, the town was advised to not pursue foreclosure because of the issue, which has now been remediated and is now okay, so it's not-
Like, a long time ago, still?
About a year ago.
Yeah, it hasn't been a real long time.
We talked about that property, and we did some ferreting, we found out the E P released it, that was last year's discussion.
Yeah.
I actually agree with you, John, that what we need to do is put a benchmark for town meeting to see if we can allocate more money in her legal account.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not fair that people pay taxes and some people don't.
That's right, I agree with you on that one.
So, Heather, if you just make a note for your new interim T A, that that'll be one of the topics of fun.
And Donna, if you can come back to us before that in time.
Yeah, I'll let you know whether, whether-
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
No.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna jump down here, because this is easy. Special municipal employee designation policy. We, uh, had an item to take and designate the, uh, health agent and, and this position. We read it into the record the last time, but I hear a motion to designate him as a special town employee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
No. Although it was me, I don't have any discussion.
I, I, I just wanna make sure folks are aware, um, what Charlie's referring to is the board has a special municipal employee policy that they adopted a couple months ago, formally, um, the board started adopting policies after they adopted a pol- procedure on policies, which is everything that comes before the board, theoretically, when possible, gets placed on file for ten days, it's been on the website, been on town clerk's office. The only modification is all the- The only modification is all the current boards committees are there, but the position, and it's the position, not the person, the position of health agent was added, because it was requested as a part-time person and so forth, that he does all the business in the town, he wanted to make sure there was no conflicts. So that is where that comes from. So by saying yes and moving forward tonight, all the board is doing is amending the special municipal employee policy that's currently on the record to now include health agents. So we will reflect that in the documentation and the files online, as well as in the offices.
Motion is made, a second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Did you get that vote?
Four to zero, we got it, done.
All right. Let's get back to the beginning of the meeting. Bernie?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
It's just.
Do you have some copies here?
I do have copies of the PowerPoint that-
Thank you.
I will try to be, um, I will try to be brief. Uh, I, I presented to you tonight the, um, the report that I've generated as a result of the work that I've done here, um, coming out to Southampton over the last several months, uh, talking to people and, uh, looking at, um, some materials and giving you my opinion. I, I have a PowerPoint that, uh, is included within your, uh, packages there, and I've just handed one out to, or we've handed one out to everyone here. Uh, we won't be able to do it on the screen, we've got some technology issues, I guess, but I will briefly go through what we have, what I have for, uh, my findings, my recommendations. So if you could just follow along with the PowerPoint, uh, or I could hold it up for you, but that, I don't think that's gonna necessarily work. Uh, just by way of background, uh, and I, again, I know you've been here for a long time, and I don't wanna take up too much time, um, I have to drive back to Plymouth tonight anyway, so. Uh, but, uh, I don't come into this, um, this assignment as a, as a novice about municipal government. I have over thirty-five years of experience working with the four municipalities. Uh, I've listed there, uh, a number of the positions that I've held, and I, I note those simply because it runs the gamut in terms of the type of work that I've done. Uh, executive secretary in the town of Chelmsford back in the nineteen eighties was very similar to the situation that you're in here, in the, uh, town of Southampton, with the town administrator position. The very, although they have different titles, the responsibilities were essentially the same. Uh, it's really dependent upon the boards of selectmen, uh, in each community, how they're going to utilize that, uh, that position. So that's, that's similar. I was there as they changed the form of government, and I became the town manager after going through an extensive search, and I had to fight to keep my office there. Uh, but I was made town manager, and I was able to implement the charter. Uh, so I went through that experience in the town of Chelmsford. I then became city manager, so I was there in Chelmsford for about twenty years total. City manager, uh, in Lowell for about eight years. Obviously Southampton and Lowell are completely different places. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I did have that experience, so I have to put that down. I was the interim town manager in the town of Winchandon for about, uh, six months, uh, going back into a, a smaller community, uh, about ten thousand people, I believe it is. Uh, I was asked to come in by the Department of Revenue, because they had serious financial issues that needed to be addressed, uh, and I had the opportunity to work with them there on, uh, looking at their charter, as well as, um, the, those financial issues of managing, and then also I did the recruitment for a new manager for them. When I left Lowell, I started my own consulting firm, Community Paradigm Associates, uh, which is what I'm here on, uh, tonight, is holding that, uh, that position. I provide a variety of municipal, uh, services to municipalities and to businesses, working with municipalities. Um, but runs the gamut in terms of public management studies, personnel studies, charter work, and so on. I have an academic experience, I teach at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, as well as Suffolk University, as adjunct faculty member in both commu, in both of the institutions, teaching public, public management and local government. Uh, and then I, uh, worked with a number of communities around the state, either requested the DOR, DHCD, or the communities themselves on their forms of government. So I come in with a, a breadth of knowledge, I hope, about how local governments work and how the different, uh, structures are, uh, set up. This particular project, as you know, was funded through the Community Compact Program, and specifically it asked for an independent analysis of the current governmental structure and assistance in drafting a charter for a more effective centralized government. That is what I've done. In terms of my process and methodology, and again, I'm flying through this, and I apologize, if I'm going too fast, stop me. If you want me to talk even faster, I will try. I've looked at a variety of documents, your bylaws, your special acts, your policy books, and so on and so on, that I've listed here, including the DOR reports, which identified a number of issues that needed to be addressed here in the town of Southampton. Uh, it does appear like many of those have been addressed, but there is still some outstanding, I believe. I've also taken advantage of my time coming out here to interview a number of people. I've interviewed, uh, several of the board members, I've interviewed the town administrator, the department heads, various elected bodies, appointed bodies, uh, some community residents. I've looked at, uh, other communities, uh, and as a result of all of that, you have in your hands the final report, uh, which is my general observations, looking at your existing organizational chart, uh, which I'll get to in a second. I've given you my findings of what I've found as I went through this process, and my recommendations. And I've given you a revised organizational chart based upon that, and I've given you a draft charter. You can take that charter, you can add the necessary language at the beginning of it, and stick it on your town meeting warrant. Uh, I'd have your town council, should, will probably review it anyway, but it's set up for you to move in that direction. But there are other opportunities or other options you have as well that I'll get to. The questions that I looked at were, are there clear lines of accountability for essential management of your, uh, your organization? How does the organizational communication take place? Are you strategically prepared for future challenges or opportunities? Are you designed for efficiency and timely response? Do you properly manage and develop human resources? Uh, do you have a personnel succession plan for high performance? Is there the appropriate level of leadership? Is the local government easily understood by its owners, the citizens, the members of the community, and the users? Uh, and that's all of the stakeholders. Residents, employees, elected officials, appointed officials, outside people looking to come in and do business here, the business community at large. Is there confidence in trust in the government? And does the government have a process by which there's a continual review to look for improvement? Every organization, you can go into any organization and find areas of improvement. Do you have a process in place to do that? My quick conclusions. Lot of positives. You have every elected official that I met with clearly committed, conscientious. You have some very good department heads, I'd say every department head I spoke to, very devoted and talented. Clearly you have citizens, some citizens willing to serve. You do have, or you did have, and I expect you will have, a very dedicated and forward-looking town administrator. You've improved your financial management based upon looking at the DOR reports. You've improved your financial stability in large part due to the policies you've put in place, particularly as it relates to reserves. But in terms of looking at those other questions, I think you've got some issues that need to be addressed. While you may be stable right now, but clearly, I think Donna's presentation tonight was a clear example, you have issues, um, across the board of how you deal with those types of problems. And while you may be stable right now, my concern for the town of Southampton would be looking forward, will you be able to deal with challenges that might arise, or deal with opportunities that may arise? So my findings. Finding, first finding, and this is no secret to anyone, probably, you have an extremely fragmented and decentralized form of government. Uh, probably the most decentralized and fragmented form of government that I've seen. And again, these are local decisions. I'm coming in as someone who's telling you, as someone who works with local governments, the issues that you have. If it works for the town of Southampton, and you would like to keep this form of government, by all means. But it's my responsibility to tell you that I think you've got some issues. Uh, it is decentralized, it is fragmented, it negatively reflects accountability issues, internal and external communications, coordination of effort, and the efficient utilization of resources. And I recognize that the notion of having multiple or many elected positions, what's commonly referred to as the long ballot, where everything is elected, opens you up to some serious issues or serious risks. I'm gonna go back to your treasurer collector who is here, to Donna. I think she does an outstanding job. You're very fortunate to have her, she sees problems, she has solutions, and so on. I know you've addressed this, or tried to address this problem in the past. The DOR told you you needed to address this. If she were to leave, if she were to win the lottery this week and decide she wants to leave, do you have someone else in town that has the skills and capabilities to fill that position? That would run for the office? There probably is someone here in town that would be excellent, but would they run for the office? Would they win the office? And what you expose yourself to then is the possibility of someone who's managing a large amount of money and dealing with collection issues, dealing with borrowing issues, that simply isn't able to do the job as effectively as clearly you're very fortunate to have here. I've given you your current organizational chart. As I started to assemble it, and put it together and put it together, it's a flat line. That's not your condition, that's your organization. It's a flat line across, the selectmen have very little, the selectmen are the chief executive officers of the town, and you have very little control, ability to direct much of this governmental organization. If someone described to me regarding a couple of things here in town, you have all the responsibility and none of the authority. That's problematic. No business would operate in this way. Uh, and, you know, that whole idea of government should operate like a business, clearly it doesn't run completely true. You can't run government completely like a business, but you can take governmental, you can take organizational principles of business and look at these. If you were to actually look at this organizational chart, you could create essentially a silo for every single one of these squares or rectangles, uh, that are there. The ability to coordinate all of that depends very much, and I give you credit, sitting here tonight and watching you go through some of these elected boards and appointed boards and elected positions, you're able to pull that together. But if at some point in time, someone says, no, we're elected just like you, there's no authority to do anything about that. And I don't doubt that that has happened in the past. So, that's what you have now. So there's inadequate, this is what I'm getting from, looking at it, but it's also what I'm getting from the people who spoke to me, inadequate coordination and conformity. I've heard from a number of people, that the, the result of which is there are inefficiencies, and there are lost opportunities for savings. Uh, there's a potential for contradictory decisions. In fact, I know from talking to people that there have been contradictory decisions from different parts of the organization. No one has sort of a big picture. I think you try, clearly, as the board of selectmen, to do this, to have that big picture. But again, your authority is limited, and so all of the other silos are only dealing with their specific issues, not necessarily the town as a whole. And that's where I think you did some real opportunities for some improvements there. Duplication of resources, staff equipment, and we've talked about that, lost opportunities for economies of scale, inadequate communication, potential conflicting messaging, uh, and weak executive leadership. And I don't mean that, that I think you are weak, but I mean by that is you don't have the authority that you should have as the chief executive body of this town. Finding number two, lack of strategic, and this is where I, I think the board should play a greater role. A lack of a strategic goal-setting and tactical implementation of established objectives, uh, so that you can respond to internal and external challenges. Every organization, this is one of the biggest issues for organizations, is are they prepared? Can they see the future, or try to see the future, in terms of your resources, in terms of your development trends, in terms of new issues that are coming your way? Uh, it's very difficult to do that when you are only in charge of a very small portion of that. It's also very difficult to do that when you're trying to play the role, not only of the executive body looking at the entire community, but when you're also trying to handle day-to-day administrative matters. And that's where I think you, uh, there needs to be some improvements there as well, which I will get to. And the next finding. Finding number three, a lack of formal institutionalized management that can successfully and consistently ensure that service delivery and resource utilization is occurring in the most efficient, timely, and cost-effective manner. You don't have, what I've heard across the board, is that it doesn't appear that there's anyone in charge. And that's a, that's an area that I think that, um, can present problems. And it's gonna present problems, as I indicate in my cover letter, um, replacing the town administrator is going to be a very challenging task for you. And it's, um, you, you'll see that, and I, I'm sure when you deal with Mr. Markle, you'll be, uh, he'll, he will probably advise you of the same thing. These are a challenge that you're gonna have. Uh, again, I'm trying to go through this as quickly as I can. Finding four, you have been, many improvements in the budget process. The finance committee certainly spoke highly of the budget process, uh, talking to the town administrator. Uh, but the DOR was very clear, and I think it's the same. What you really need here is an executive budget. The town administrator should be playing the lead role. One person should be coordinating the entire thing. When you put many equal people at the table, there's many ways that the fingers can point when things go wrong. And you've been able, you've been fortunate to get through this point, but the concern is moving forward. Again, many of these, I, these notions or these findings are related to what could happen, and you wanna get ahead of it, as opposed to being behind it. Number five, uh, and you're not unique in this one, at all. A concern regarding a lack of citizen engagement and trust in its local government. The, uh, the, the example that was given to me by several people related to the public safety complex. You have a serious problem with your public safety complex, with your public safety buildings. Uh, I think everybody knows that, but there, what came back to me is just couldn't get the citizens to really buy in, because there really wasn't total confidence. Every community, every community has this issue. I teach a whole course on citizen engagement. This is something that's across the board, of how do we get people involved and participating, how do we get them to trust, and how do we get them to have a sense of community? But, um, so this finding could be anywhere, but I'm talking in Southampton. I do think your legis, finding number six, I do think your legislative process is appropriate. I, there were some people that when they talked to me, they said, are you gonna suggest that we go to representative town meeting? Statutory, I don't believe you can, because of your size, but I wouldn't recommend that anyway. I think your town meeting works, is the right legis, type of legislative body for the town. However, I do think, the other feedback I got from a number of people, in kind of watching the way town meeting operates, I think it can be made more citizen-friendly, and I think it can be, uh, much more effective for the delivery of information, so as to improve citizen engagement. It's the people's body that's meeting, and it should be treated as such, and people should be able to play a real role there, and get information and have discussions. And I think that there are some things that can be done to make it more interactive and contemporary to what the people are looking for today. Uh, finding seven, um, a lack of a si, formal single voice in management of regional, regional consequence. It was good to hear the Conservation Commission is talking to other communities about sharing conservation, but that's one body. If every body's going off and doing their own thing, there isn't that single voice. There also isn't necessarily that single voice for the opportunities that might, well, that's an opportunity, or the challenges that might arise from one community to another. Because the problems or the, and the challenges, it's, excuse me, the opportunities and challenges don't stop at the border. Eight, you don't operate, and this is why I assume you asked that we look at the potential of the charter, you act off of the general laws. You're a general law community. So whatever the state legislature has put in the books over the last, uh, you know, two hundred-plus years, that's what drives you in terms of your local government. There are some special acts that you, that you have, um, but under the Home Rule, constitutional amendment of the Home Rule Act of nineteen sixty-six, you have greater control over what you do as a community, and how you structure yourself, the processes that you put in place, uh, much more in the way of that local control. You can set your own course, and that's what a charter will do for you. Um, and I think that that, uh, is, is, is an issue. The other issue that I have, that I ran across, and in working with, uh, uh, town clerk Domner, she identified this as well, that the special acts that the town has sought from the legislature, the, um, general laws that the town has accepted, uh, there isn't a clear record of those. Made it very difficult, very difficult to understand what was going on. Made it very difficult, very difficult to understand what was going on. We talked about that. She said, you know, this was something that she identified and wanted to make a major project, moving forward. And, so, someone coming in and trying to understand how the town government works, you have to go through a file, one by one. And some of them deal with Southampton, some of them don't. I tried to go through them all, and very frankly, it was an impossible task. So, that's, that's an issue that you are going to have, moving forward. The other issue that's sort of related to that is your bylaws. Your bylaws are structured in a way that really don't work well, in terms of understanding. It's like, whenever a new idea is developed, that becomes number whatever. As opposed to understanding, what are the general bylaws as relates to a public nuisance? What are the general bylaws as relates to dogs? What are the general bylaws as relates to government structure, process? It's just, whatever comes next, comes next. And I know that's something your bylaw committee's working on, but I had to bring it up. My recommendations, do a whole more charter. I've given you a draft. You may like it, you may not, we can probably, we can talk about that. But over half the, about half the state now has adopted charters. It gives you local control, your structure, your processes, and your priorities. Recommendation number two, update your local bylaws and tracking your legislative actions. Again, I think that's already underway, but it should be done. It will improve your operation, it will improve the usability and understanding of your citizens, your local officials, your employees, as well as outsiders that are doing business with the town. This is one that I know will probably raise some eyebrows. I think you need to reduce the number of independent elected boards and officials. What you really have to do is do the test of looking, is are they making policy, or are they administering? Excuse me. If they're administering, they shouldn't be elected, thank you. They should be appointed. There's skills with regards to that, there's responsibilities that you need to make sure that it's being done by people that are in the appropriate position. Policymakers are elected, and Board of Selectmen should be the chief policymaker. You want to increase executive control by the Board of Selectmen and by the town administrator. You want to increase efficient operations and accountability. The other benefit of this is, you know, you have that citizen caucus. There aren't many communities left in the Commonwealth to do that, but some do. What that really reflects is you don't have enough people oftentimes to run for offices. If you were to reduce the number of elected officials, not encouraging you to get competition for these seats. But, if you did have more people running for fewer seats, you would have more competition. And that would be a way of engaging citizens in a greater way. I've done a proposed organizational chart here. And again, this is, this is, I wrestled with this, as to whether I should tell you my opinion of what's best, or try to sort of play the political side of this. I decided, that's not my job. My job is to tell you what's the best form, and that's what I've done. So, and the scenario that I've painted out here is that the voters would elect the Board of Selectmen, the Housing Authority, the Planning Board, the Library Trustees, the two school boards, and the moderator. I've also reflected here that the Board of Selectmen will approve, will appoint the town accountant. The moderator will appoint the Finance Committee. The moderator is the presiding officer of the legislative body. The Finance Committee is the advisory body to the legislative body. That's one that most communities set it up that way, but certainly, we can take a look at that. But that would be appointed, as opposed to elected. And then, the board will also appoint a town administrator that would have jurisdiction, responsibility, accountability, most, more than anything else, over these other administrative positions. And included within that would be the formation of a DPW. You essentially had a DPW in some respects, a de facto DPW, a few years back, because you had someone on the water who was also running your highway, your public work. It made sense, it worked. It makes sense to go back to, it makes sense to have a real public works department. You're going to see a couple pages here that are the same. It was going to be much more dramatic when I showed you my organizational chart and then your flat chart.
You can read it.
So, so when you look at that flat chart now, go, "Ooh." So, but that's, I've tried to just, wanted to show you sort of where you are and what you would now have as a proposed organization. Recommendation number four, establish a formal position of town administrator. It's referenced in your bylaws. At first, it was, the early, first version of the bylaws was administrative assistant, then it was changed to a town administrator. But it's really not clear what the town administrator does. It does whatever you want town administrator to do. That doesn't give that position enough management authority. You need a central management authority for day-to-day operations, thereby freeing you up to do more of the real strategic planning and oversight that you need to do. So, it would be focused on these operations, accountability, performance, dealing with issues of procurement. You know, and I heard the Conservation Commission talking about having to go to the legislature to get a bill approved, because it wasn't handled properly. You need someone in charge to make sure those types of things don't happen. And you need to make sure that the personnel matters are handled in a way that avoids, as you probably know, I know you know, personnel is a tremendous exposure to communities in terms of liability. And you need to have that managed in the best possible way. You need to strengthen the budget process, as I said earlier. This is the recommendation of the DOR, this is recommendation number five. You should have an executive budget. That budget, and this is going to put a lot of pressure on the next town administrator if you do this, that budget should be prepared in a way that isn't just numbers, but it's actually a tool for communicating to people in the town what's happening, where their money's going, what they're trying to accomplish. And it should be geared to planning and performance. Recommendation number six, is to strengthen and streamline the personnel function. It's too fragmented. You know, it's good to have that type of control, I guess, to have lots of hands dealing with this, but it becomes a very cumbersome process. It should be a situation, I'm working with another community right now that didn't even have a personnel system really in place. Very strong manager, but not a, somewhere along the line, they got rid of the personnel policy. We're now reinstituting that, and the Board of Selectmen sets the personnel policy of the town, because that's what their job is. And then it's left up to the town administrator to actually implement and administer that policy, to ensure consistency and merit. I do recommend that you, and I've put it into the charter, that there actually be a strategic planning process. Again, this is something you can put in a charter that doesn't show up anywhere in the general laws. But this puts in place a system where the Board of Selectmen have an accountability for the vision and direction of the town, and their focus is on big picture. I also recommend, and again, it's something that, and it's interesting to hear, some of the discussion with the town, with the town accountant tonight, and the town treasurer, and the building inspector. You want data, you want information. You should have in place, and this won't show up in the charter necessarily, but it should be something that is the responsibility of the town administrator, put in place a performance measurement system. Data-driven management, focused on performance, innovation, reporting, and then tied into your budget documents. Recommendation number nine, you should make your town meeting more interactive. I think you should set up, change the way you organize the physical layout, so the people present to the moderator, who's the presiding officer, and the members of the public. I think you should have, and it should work, a PowerPoint system, so the people can see what they're voting on. I know that isn't the way it was necessarily done 200 years ago. That's what people want now. They want to understand that. I have delivered, presented to so many town meetings, I can tell you, the ability to be able to show people things makes for much better discussions. Otherwise, it's just confusion. We have technology, it should be used. And the focus should be on the participants, the people that are there, because it is the people's body. Recommendation number 10, really tied to everything else. Enhance civic engagement and trust, greater accountability with the data that's released to the public. Clear organization and processes. Involve the citizens in the strategic planning process. Provide for increased communication of information, and have a user-friendly legislative body. The next steps, take what I've given you. Read it over, review it. I'd be happy to come back to have a sit-down work session, maybe we talk about this in greater detail. I can answer more questions, I can, you know, we can modify and tweak and whatever you want. At some point, perhaps a community forum, again, I'd be happy to come back for that. And then, if you so choose, to put it before a town meeting with this charter. If you, again, it's up to you. And then it's up to town meeting whether to proceed, and then there's a whole implementation, but that's a year and a half, two years down the road, before you necessarily get to that. The way the process works is it goes to town meeting. If town meeting approves it, it goes to the legislature, then it comes back and is voted on by the citizens. And that's how the process would work. So, that's my fly-through of my report, my recommendations. It's really, it's been a pleasure talking to everybody and learning more about Southampton. And I'd be happy to take any questions or comments. I know it's late.
I'm exhausted from listening to all this good, I mean, in a good way. I think a lot of this information we knew, some of it we tried to get through. Hopefully, this report will give us more backing to go out there. And one of the key things coming out of here, we need a top-notch town administrator during this process to handle this. I mean, we're elected, obviously, and most of us work. So, I think that's one of the keys. A lot of work to be done.
Yeah, seems like you did a very thorough job, and I can't wait to go through this and read it.
All right.
We would like to have you back, I can see that coming. I will be candid, knowing the town. Going to move the charter through this system is going to probably require a committee and a lot of buy-in, yes, and somebody on the mountain.
Oh, another committee, they'll love it.
You can't get committees to be on committees, that's the problem.
And again, I'd be happy to be involved with some of that, to help you out through that process. This isn't the la, you know, this isn't, here's your report, and I'm done.
This is the starting point, to give us a foundation to move forward with this discussion. It's like you pointing out the town meeting. We're well aware of the town meeting. But, we need something to show people at the town meeting why that needs to change.
And again, I'd, you know, I'd be happy to play some role in that. We can talk about that, and I can, I'd be happy to have Bob Markle give me a call and that as well, to be your contact. All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry to keep you so long.
Oh, that's all right.
He was enjoying it.
He enjoyed it.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Bernie's, I don't know what's coming.
Bye, Bernie.
It's like, okay, now what?
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, that was fun.
You're just ticking these things off fast.
A lot of good information, though.
Electricity, Mr. Power.
You sure you want to come up after that?
Come on, Todd. I don't know, I was ready to hit the doors. All right. So, I want to give you a little update on a few things, but first, electricity contracts. So about 18 months ago, I was here and you guys signed the contract to get electricity supply from GDF Suez. I didn't like long-term contracts back then, and sure enough, it's come to fruition because energy has gone down. So, I met with Heather a few weeks back, and we've talked over the last couple of months. For a renewal contract, I went out to different suppliers, one of the best contracts and price between, again, from GDF Suez. It's a great supplier, they do a wonderful job. At .8733 cents per kilowatt hour, so you're going to save a little over a penny for about $6,600 a year. It's a 12-month contract. Again, I like short-term contracts, I don't know what this Marcella shale is going to do, I don't know what the renewable energy market's going to do. So, locking into a long-term contract right now, I don't think is in the best interest of the town. And I do a lot of municipalities' contracts, and we're not going out long-term right now. If I see something different in the next three to six months, I might come back and say something different. But right now, I don't see long-term contracts having value. And as you can see, or Heather saw, you know, a 20-month contract is three-quarters of a penny higher. So, if we went into a long-term contract and energy continues to slowly go down, you've paid a premium for that, and you took on a lot of additional risk. So I don't see that as a value proposition right now. So my recommendation with Heather was go into a 12-month contract, and then look at the pricing as we go along for these 12 months. Unfortunately, I was surprised when Heather told me she wasn't going to be the new town administrator for next year. So, I know Bob Markle from his days at the City of Springfield, so I'll be more than happy to have those conversations with him or the next full-time town administrator.
Are you looking for direction from this board tonight?
Yeah, to endorse and approve Heather to go into a 12-month contract with GDF Suez.
At .87?
Yeah, .8733 to be exact.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, what does that save us annually again?
Off the old rate, it actually saves another $6,600.
And this time, it does include from the Getco Norris School.
Yes.
Because last time, for some reason, when we were trying to get all the accounts, that one was not included, so we had to add it later on. But this time, we double-checked, we actually got a list of all the accounts from Eversource directly, and I transmitted it directly to Todd, so it was incorporated.
And that's, a lot of times, that stuff just happens. Toner Drake, and I just did, I just did theirs, it was like 82 accounts, and a couple got missed. So, it does happen, you hate to see it, but you try to catch them. And when you have renewals, you learn from that mistake, and you make sure that everybody's on going forward. And you try to get consolidated billing.
So is there any lower cost out there that you can see, on a short-term basis?
No, no. I mean, the three other ones that were closest to that were 9-1, 9-3, and 9-1-4. And that was, you know, three top suppliers.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Genanntest, did you get the motion?
Hold on, we're slower right now, it's late.
It's the energy problem here.
And then I'll get a contract over to Heather tomorrow.
Do we need authorization for signature on the contract? Or are we just doing this by the law?
Just authorize Heather to enter in the contract.
Just making sure.
Who made that motion?
John.
Second.
Jim.
All right, go ahead, Todd.
And then, so I wanted to give you an update on the solar project. So, Lake Street Development, which you guys went into contract to procure the net metering credits. So that project is about 75% completed. They should be done by first, second week in December. And then Eversource has got to do their part of the upgrades in interconnection, which that should be 30 to 60 days. Eversource is a little bit slower than National Grid, for whatever reason, but it is what it is. So they're hoping that the project will be online, commercial operation date, mid-January to February, and then pushing solar credits thereafter. And so then you would start getting these net metering credits onto your accounts of, I think it's about a half a million kilowatt hours. And those savings are roughly $9,000, $10,000 for the new rates that Eversource has to pay the developers for the kilowatt hours that it produces. And so we're pretty much on track for where we proposed last year.
Yeah, it was 10, if I remember, last year.
Yeah, so it's right around $10,000, the savings to the town. That's a 20% discount with a 7% floor. Projects that I'm doing now, I just came from Central Berkshire Regional School District, trying to get them 2 million kilowatt hours, which is four times as much as you're getting. The highest rates I'm getting is 15%. And no guarantee the project's going to get built, because SREC 2 has come into a close. SREC 3, which is the feed-in tariff, doesn't have the incentives as SREC 2. So, you guys got the best rate I was ever able to negotiate for any Eversource project. Glad you guys came on. And Central Berkshire was offered that same project. And they didn't take it, and now I'm giving them 13% to 15% is the highest I can get right now. And then the last piece, I'm starting to talk to some municipalities, is... And then the last piece, I'm starting to talk to some municipalities, is about municipal aggregation, is trying to help residents and business owners that get default service from the utility company to aggregate all the accounts and get them a lower rate, and really protect them from these predatory suppliers. I mean, just an example, the other day, a neighbor of mine came in to my house and showed me that she, she had an offer to sign up for a two-year price, now this is Eversource, this is Agua, Eversource West, the old Umeco, eleven point two cents for a two-year contract. And they said, this is a great deal, you're gonna save money. And I said to her, I go, Tracy, I pulled up Eversource's rates, it was eight point three cents, right today, if you, if you didn't do anything, you're saving three cents. She was ready to sign on the dotted line, she thought she was gonna get a great deal. So, with municipal aggregation, that's what it really tries to avoid, is the residents to get good rates, they don't, if I tried to do your job, I'd fail. You tried to do my job, maybe you'd do okay. But that's what I do each and every day, is get municipalities to do municipal aggregation for their town buildings. This would allow it to do it for residential and commercial with someone who actually knows the market and is local. And these guys are out of Pennsylvania, and California, and Florida, they just come in, they get a supplier's license, and they can go out and do whatever they want. And so, that's where I'm starting to talk to a lot of towns that are my clients, to try to bring municipal aggregation to the whole community and help them out. And, and I know with business owners, a lot of times, you get thirty-party supply because you've got good credit, and with the utility company, basic service, service fault, that's your last and only option. And this actually prevents that. So, you get better rates, and you get volume discounts. And so, whether the town would like to proceed further with those conversations, I'd be more than happy to, to have those discussions.
What does that entail, and what's the commitment of an individual resident, if we had one?
So, there's what's called an opt-out clause. So, everybody would be included in it, and then a resident or a business owner could opt out. They could say, no, I don't wanna, I wanna go out and get a
They have to be proactive to opt out.
Yes, they have to. And that's just the way the, the state set the program up.
Okay, so if I'm in, and I don't opt out right away, and I don't like it down the road, do I have another option to opt out?
Depending on how you structure the document in the beginning, yep. You have a little bit of control of that, but once it's set, then it's, then it's set. Then you have to wait for that contract to renew, and the contracts could be either be a one-year, two-year, or three-year, whatever's best and whatever's advisable at the time. Again, I don't like going long-term with, you know, the energy market the way it is up here in the Northeast right now.
So, when the contract renews, there's another opt-out period?
Well, there's, there's another way to redesign that document, to say, okay, we, we got a lot of feedback from the community, they didn't like the opt-out with a stringent, let's say, a six-month time period, so, okay, maybe we shorten it.
Okay. So, we have options.
And there's companies that do the municipal aggregation that we could go to and find their experience, and get that before you actually get the document drafted.
So, we have options structuring the agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Limited, but yeah.
Yes, yep. So, that's, that's it for me, short and sweet.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Heather, you with us?
I hope so.
You wanna do your final report?
I was thinking that due to the evening and the fact that the board still has more to go, I am more than happy to submit my report written, and also copy it onto the website, so folks can read it if they're intrigued.
Doable.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Excellent.
I take it there's no select board updates?
Nope.
I didn't think there would be. All right, I guess we're going into the business. And we have a number of articles that need to be handled in January. I move that we table this for our next meeting.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so moved. Did you get that?
You said so moved, does that mean?
Do you need an official motion?
No, that's fine. Table.
No, it's just a talking.
That's fine, I'm
You had a movement. You know, I'm just a bus driver.
Do we have remote access on these mics?
Okay. Discussion, appointment, records, access of officers related to the change of, again, I moved the table list to the next meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't go into effect till January, so that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appointments, personnel, personnel change forms. Heather, town administrator resignation. Nancy Okolevich, Assistant COA Director, continued nineteen hours a week until COA Director hired. Florence Collins, COA Volunteer Coordinator, continued seven hours a week until COA Director hired. Jennifer Peliquin, COA Director, resignation. Michael Goyette, Police Chief, salary increase. Colleen Kuchar, Tempt Town Clerk, for elections only, revised job title. Do you hear a motion?
Same old.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, unanimous.
So, on the next one, Charlie, this is the PRF for the COA Director. FinCom did not give me that document, but I believe it's gone through triple PB, so I don't know if something's missing. So, I don't know if the board wishes to move forward. I know they need someone, they'd like to post this as soon as possible.
If we don't have anything, how can we vote on it?
Well, it was on the Personnel Board's agenda for the last meeting. The question is where the paperwork is. Sometimes I, sometimes I miss a document that comes to me, but I do know they need to move forward on this.
Make a motion to authorize me to, to sign this if it
Council on Aging.
I mean, it's just posting the position, it sounds like.
For what, for what position?
It's the Council on Aging Director position, that Jen, Jen was out on leave, and she came back and said, I, I'm no longer going to be working for the town. So, right now, that's why you had the two PCFs you just approved for the extended hours for these other two folks, but they cannot continue to keep working extended, like, they just don't have the ability in their own lives to continually put in the additional work. They need someone.
So, they already are ready to post?
They're, they're ready to post, they, they did the PRF process, I believe it's gone through, it went through the Personnel Board, or I wouldn't have put it on this agenda. So, I don't know if FinCom was signing off, not signing off, or just, sometimes what happens is the document doesn't always make it to my fingertips. So, if you guys want to approve pending the fact that I confirmed that all signatures are on it, I'm happy to, I just wanna give the best chance possible to move forward and post this for Saturday.
So, Charlie, you said that you would take the lead if we make a motion?
If you authorize me to sign this pending
Verification that I'll
Review.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
It's either that, or we wait until the fifteenth, and that's two weeks.
Well, no, the posting needs to get done.
And it's only a posting, it's not like
Right, right.
Exactly.
As long as you're checking to make sure all the signatures and everything's in order, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good job, John.
He gets a great seat.
What do you want, you know? Well, we already voted on the interim contract.
Yeah.
We already voted on the police chiefs, you know, or police, police stuff. Bill warrants, need a motion to
Okay, I didn't know if you had to do that in public, or private? The police contract, we voted on it, and we talked about it in executive, right?
Right.
Do we have to do that in public?
I don't think so.
Terms have changed since what was originally proposed, you may wanna wait until C, make sure that they concur, and then move forward.
Very good.
And we can always put it on a later meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Where is the town administrator? We are voted that already.
Yep, and that was public.
So, it's now the warrants.
Want me to read them?
Please.
Okay, payroll warrant, PD seventeen dash eighteen, forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty cents. Payroll, PD seventeen dash sixteen A for a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy cents. And payroll, P seventeen dash eighteen for two hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents. I make the motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's done.
Was that it, was it payroll?
That's just the bill warrants?
There was all of them.
That was all?
All of them.
Okay.
There's three of them.
Approval of minutes. Have everyone reviewed the minutes to their satisfaction?
Now, hold on here. Let's correct, correct ourselves here.
That was done
That was last week?
It was voted on, but not signed.
Okay, just need the signatures, okay?
I'm good, but I'm just waiting for everybody else.
Approval of minutes of August eleventh, twenty sixteen, special meeting. September thirteenth, twenty sixteen, special meeting. September twentieth, twenty sixteen. September twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen. September twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, special meeting. September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, special meeting. October fourth, twenty sixteen. October twentieth, twenty sixteen. Do I hear a motion to
Did you read them?
I did, you wanna look at them? Pass them on down.
Can you read them?
What?
Can you read them?
You wanna work around that one, or?
Well, I mean
I think that might be the last thing, maybe the board could consider making a vote to approve, and if there's any modifications that need to be made, take them up at the next meeting, because we're outstanding a few months on these minutes.
Well, I know, at least three of us read them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we accept them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That is it for the meeting, isn't it?
Calendar and announcements.
Oh.
So, the next meeting's over in three, Charlie, or the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, and tax, tax rate sending hearing will be on November fifteenth. That is when the board gets
Decide the very important question of whether they should have a split tax rate. So, someone from the assessor's office will be here, it's mandated by law to have this hearing, it's not just, we're bored. So, the advertisement's been in the news, will, has been in the newspaper, will be in the newspaper again on the fifteenth, and that will be the hearing, it's at six o'clock, as advertised by the newspaper. And that's all I have. The only other thing, if the board wants to go to an exec to approve the minutes, or we can put them on for the fifteenth meeting in executive.
The table. Okay?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn, anybody wanna leave?
Apparently not.